Good evening, everyone. I'm calling the Wednesday, August 9th Board of Supervisors regular meeting that is continued from Monday due to the severe weather that we had. We have Kier Witson joining us from New Jersey due to personal reasons, and we have Van Carney joining us from Maine due to personal reasons. Gentlemen, can you both hear us?
Yes, I am, yes.
Thank you.
The biggest problem will be them knowing when each other is going to talk.
Yep. All right. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of Silence. Thank you.
Madam Chair, is there something?
Yes, sir.
I would move that we adopt our agenda for this evening's meeting with the following changes and reorder it. Number one, I suggest that we remove the general public comment period, that is, the public comment period for general matters not related to any of the hearing schedule per night into first position in the SC paint's agenda. Second, this currently D letter, D as in day, would be the agenda. Second, I suggest we move old business currently F as in Frank in the agenda into second position or evening agenda, and that would be limited solely to the Forester Tourist Home application for which we've already held a public hearing. Third, I'd suggest that we post new business next, which is currently C in the agenda in the following order. First, the Miller application for a tourist home. Second, the RSM application for renewal with special exception permit, followed by Mills' tax rate hearing. Fourth, the lodging tax rate hearing. And finally, the sign ordinance in that order. And that's my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
I think we should adopt the agenda in the way that it was laid out. That's the expectation of people in the courtroom this evening, is that things be heard in the order that they've been put on the agenda.
I think it'd be a bit confusing because I'm going to have to ask you to repeat that to start with.
Well, and the purpose of having public comment at the end of the meeting is so that if there's issues that haven't been addressed in the course of the meeting, that we can circle back to them at the end of the meeting. So by moving that to the front of the meeting, you're eliminating the useful purpose that we put it at the end of the meeting for.
Mr. Witson, would you mind if I asked a question, why do you think that that's a better order to have public comment in?
If you want to move public comment somewhere else, I'm happy to amend my motion.
I mean, I think we have--
It's mainly, I'll just finish. It's mainly because the bulk of tonight's session is rooted to standalone public hearings, which they themselves involve public comment and the context of each hearing. So I thought it would not make any difference. But I'm not wedded to that. I'd happily put public comment at the end to keep my other changes in place.
Well, we have advertised--
Oh, this is my second. If that was an amended motion, Kier.
Sure.
I mean, we have advertised public hearings for seven o'clock.
Yeah, so from a legal advertising standpoint, everybody who wants to be here for a public hearing knows they need to be here at seven. They will come as they come on the agenda. They're not all at seven. So as long as it's after seven, I think you're safe.
But I'm not entirely sure where public comment is with the amended amendment. Would that be then last?
Correct.
That would be last, and that's irresponsible at this point.
Any other discussion?
Could we have that enumerated again, please?
I can read back my understanding. The first item up for agenda would be what is now F1, the Forester Tourist Home that already had the public hearing. The second item will be the Miller Tourist Home public hearing. The third item will be the RSM special exception public hearing. The fourth will be the food and beverage tax rate public hearing. Fifth will be the transient occupancy tax public hearing. And then last, the last public hearing will be the ordinance amendment for the sign ordinance. And then wrapping up the evening will be the public comment period.
I would just go on the record that I think most people are here tonight to talk about the sign ordinance, and I think it's bad business to move it to the end of the meeting. But I think I'm probably outvoted three to two.
My only comment there was I expect, based on everything I've seen of the side ordinance discussion and our receipt of public comment, it's going to take a while, and I think most of these other items should be relatively efficient to move through. So it was in the spirit of efficiency, and so it's not too close in position where we're having to frontgate a discussion that's of interest to many members of the public, that is, the sign ordinance, to dispatch with, but hopefully it'll be routine business before we get to what's potentially a longer discussion. Thanks.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. A few motion passes with the new order that Mr. Curry has written down, thank goodness, which means we go into old business?
Old business, the Forester Tourist Home. Do you have Mr. Forester here? I'm going to ask him to unmute. Awesome. Yes. Can you just state your name? Who is on Zoom right now representing Forester?
Hey, hi. This is John Ford, Respirer. I live at Piedmont Farm.
Excellent. So as the board members recall, you held your public hearing on this matter a few meetings ago. Through that discussion, there were questions about one of the conditions that was recommended by the Planning Commission related to the ability for guests to use firearms on the property. County attorney prepared an opinion, which is attached to this item, suggesting that it would not be appropriate to place a condition on that item for that on this permit. The board was not in a position to move forward at your last meeting when you discussed this, because Mr. Forester wasn't available for consultation on the matter. He is with you now. And so with that, offered opportunity for discussion and discussion with Mr. Forester.
Ms. Smith, do you want to speak to this?
Well, I mean, it came up from the Planning Commission with what were an agreed upon and good set of conditions at that time, that the applicant willingly proffered in light of it being five dwellings instead of one or two, which is what we normally see in the scope of an application of this type. I would, I guess, just ask for maybe the consideration of an additional condition to include similar to the Montmedi application the other week, that it be granted but with a year renewal by the zoning administrator in light of the scope of the application. I think that's appropriate, and I'm sure the neighbors would appreciate it, and I think it would be helpful for the homeowner, too, and create a, hopefully, a good relationship between the neighbor and the homeowner going forward.
So just to refresh, the code section that was levered in that case allows the board to set a condition that would basically direct the zoning administrator to review the situation after a period of time and then be able to extend it for a defined number of years. And so the condition would have to say, in one year, is it a fair review? And if all's good, then the permit would run for X number of years.
Yeah, I would say probably, with it being tourist homes, probably a period of one year for review and then a five-year renewal after that, at which point it would expire.
And they could come back in and go through the process.
Absolutely. It's five tourist homes. I mean, all this was done under one application, right? So it's a one-time fee for five tourist homes.
Yes.
And I do wonder, the Revcom application also made me wonder, the name on the application is different than the name on the D. Do we have some paperwork that sort of reconciles that?
I can provide the board with a written statement from my uncle, who is the sole trustee of the trust, with his written express permission.
I mean, I think that's the one bridge that I'm looking for to kind of complete this application, and I would look forward to hearing what my peers on the board have to say.
And so you could make that a condition.
Yes, I would add that as a condition in addition to the conditions the Planning Commission requested.
Can I comment on that?
Absolutely.
I think, you know, I listened to the last recording of the meeting, and I heard this idea tossed around, and I think it is inappropriate for a couple of different reasons. The main reason is I wasn't going to be subject to a review period with the original restriction. So it kind of seems like this restriction being placed solely as retaliation to me standing up for wanting the firearm restriction removed. On top of that, it's being stated that it's because we need this extra restriction and review period because of the overwhelming use of the property, but I don't find that to be the case either. I have five times the required acreage per dwelling that any other application needs. You need 10 acres, I have 80 per dwelling. Or if you just said I needed 10 acres minimum, I have 350 additional acres. On top of that, I'm going to look at it a different way. And I don't think anyone who came in for a tourist home for application for one dwelling per 80 acres would have any review period put on them.
I don't think that's correct, because review periods put on applications all the time. That's what we have here tonight. Later on is a review period for a special exception.
But why?
It's a variety of reasons. I'm sorry, this is Mr. Fraser, Jackson District. But review periods are, they're, let's see, what's the word I'm looking for? They are customary.
But why don't I receive it?
I don't know that it's just you. It's just you right now in this application. We don't have another application in front of us at this very moment, but we will have in 15 or 20 minutes, maybe. And that one is a review period.
I understand that there are a lot--
I'll jump in. This is Kier Witson. Here's the deal. I totally agree. You've got perfect land buffer. It's a no-brainer in that regard, in my opinion. I'm generally not a fan of tourist homes as a use of properties in the county, but you've got beautiful property, you've got multiple houses on it, you've got lots of land, likely you want to serve neighbors. The firearm thing came out of the Planning Commission. Our county attorney weighed in on it. You raised it. I'm glad you raised it. I'm glad we looked at it. I'm glad we got an opinion from the county attorney. So we're moving beyond the firearm question, which makes good sense as where it belongs. Fact is, you had neighbors concerned because of potential noise in particular emanating from your property. And take a weekend or middle of the week, you'd have five houses, four people, no doubt you have a lot of land buffer, but still, it's a lot in one place in the county. This is not, this is not a by right use under a zoning order and support property, and that's why you're here. So what Ms. Smith is proposing, I think, is entirely reasonable. It's not you come back for a year and you have to deal with us again. Is you come back in a year, or the zoning administrator more specifically, in a year, states whether or not there have been any complaints or problems or anything, and I fully expect, I mean, it seems like you're a straight shooter, you're not going to have any problems. And then Ms. Smith, I think, has added another reasonable addition, which is five years later to be approved review. That's what we do, and we do it because what you're proposing is to run basically unattended small-scale hotels on your property, which, given the amount of property, shouldn't be a problem, but it might be a problem for neighbors. And so our job as county administrators or county supervisors is to make sure that, seeing something possible, we're doing things to keep the peace. And to that end, we apply conditions and restrictions on tourist homes. But for all the reasons you stated, I fully expect there will be no problems. So I would just caution you against feeling like you're being punished, and I would push back a little bit in your suggestion, this is anyway retaliation. I think this is a reasonable set of conditions, and I'm guessing that you'll never hear from us again, based on what you've said about how you intend to operate.
Okay, well, okay.
Was anything I said not clear?
I mean, it clearly seems like I wasn't going to have a review period with the firearm restriction. And then we removed the firearm restriction, and because of that, now we want a review period because we're worried about noise, but we weren't worried about-- So is every application come through the county going, why doesn't every application that has need to receive one of the same review period that I would?
Mr. Forester-- Yeah, Mr. Forester, I will say that we review every application diligently at both the Planning Commission and the board level, and both those bodies can impose conditions as they see fit when they hear the applications. And I will tell you that I've tried to make a middle road to be able to grant you this application, because as you know, sometimes at the Planning Commission, we would hear something, and then a little further down the road, you would double back and reverse your opinion on that thing. And you sent notes to your neighbors, letting them know you were applying for these tourist homes, and then your telephone number changed. And so I think rightfully so, and not by any fault of yours, people have some misgivings, and they would like to see what you're going to do before it is a long-term commitment. And so that is why I think that these terms are very reasonable conditions. And I mean, I think I've been clear about what my motion is, that everything that the Planning Commission recommended, I think, is part of the motion in addition to paperwork documentation to bridge between the owner of the property and the applicant for these tourist homes, and then the renewal periods and expiration dates I've specified this evening. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second for the discussion.
Just to be clear for me, what would happen at the end of the five-year period?
Well, so it'll be after six years. If everything is good after your one-year checkup, if you will, then you'll have the opportunity to apply again. And I imagine if the six years was very smooth, whoever's sitting on the board at that time and Planning Commission at the time will understand that and have that information as they're making a future decision. And maybe your situation will change, too.
Mr. Carney?
I have listened to this, and I think it is a unique situation. Mr. Forester, I hear what you're saying. You do have five, five houses. So the deal with tourist homes here is that we don't do room. So if you have a big house, we don't allow multiple parties to rent out a big house. You get one party in there. What you're proposing is five houses that are relatively close together, so you could have five separate groups, one large group, and it's just a sort of unusual for our county. So I see what my colleagues are saying. I hear your frustration, but I do hear what my colleagues are saying, and I do agree with them, that tourist homes in the Grand Bahnen are tricky. They're not by right, and we are essentially converting agricultural land into a commercial use that's not agricultural. So we have to go forward with trepidation sometime. But I think that the conditions that have been put on and the firearm restrictions lifted do sound reasonable. Thank you.
And I agree that this is definitely a different situation than we're used to, and we've got to take the neighbors into consideration, because we've not had this happen before. So I would support Ms. Smith's recommendation motion, and just know that we want to make sure everybody's a good neighbor. And even with a business like this, it's important, because you've got people that come in for the weekend or a short period of time and then leave, and they might not be as concerned about your neighbors as we are. So I agree with what we've said here tonight.
The only other thing I wondered, too, was, you know, with it being five houses, I think the insurance amount is still $500,000, the insurance coverage.
It's codified, isn't it? Sorry.
So if that's set by code, it is what it is. But you're going to have a max of 26 people on that property, $500,000 split. If there is an event between a lot of parties, it's not a lot of money.
No, not today.
Assuming you could have a balloon payment or something to be on top of--
So to be clear, there's not a requirement--
Parachute.
--unless there is a condition. And so basically, since the BZR board may impose additional appropriate conditions to include these things, one of these things is provide evidence of insurance of a certain amount.
But I thought there was $500,000 already included with this application.
And so if that's one of the, it's not one of the enumerated conditions, and it could be.
I think we need to have insurance in the amount of $500,000, and it may be more. I mean, we've not had a situation like this before. But if there's an accident out there and there's 26 people on site, as many as five parties, six parties involved, including the owner, it's not going to go very far.
All right. We have a motion and a second with the original motion.
All right. Well, I voiced my concern about that. I'm willing to leave it if no one feels that that's important.
All right. Hearing, no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Now, did we say Miller Tourist Home, I believe? Did I root down correctly?
One second. Yes, now you have special exception 230601. Ms. Thomas will give you an introduction.
Thank you. Good evening. Special exception 230601 has been filed by Cliff Miller for tax prep number 3890C. It's located at 87 Mount Vernon Lane. The property is 52.849 acres in size. Mr. Miller wishes to operate a three-bedroom tourist home pursuant to RCC 1736E and 66K. The Health Department commented that the existing home is approved for a three-bedroom sewage disposal system. VDOT had no objections to this request. The Planning Commission held their public hearing on this application June 21st, in which they recommended approval by a vote of six to zero with the following conditions: staff recommended conditions, a maximum of six guests, three bedrooms, no food service will be offered to renters of this facility, the permit terminates upon the sale or transfer of the property. The Planning Commission added that the permit can transfer to a family member without termination, that the septic tank be pumped out every three to five years as recommended by the Health Department, and a water sample to be done to drink the potability of drinking well water.
Check.
Yep. And the applicant is also present tonight.
Cliff Miller in Piedmont. And I would just quickly say that we're going to have the septic on that and all the houses that we've got cleaned out within the next month, and we check out water every year.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Miller?
I didn't have any. It was a, I mean, it's basically a commercial, it has a lot of commercial use on that property already, and so, you know, in terms of the entrance and things that we would normally have questions about, we didn't have those kinds of questions with the Planning Commission.
Mr. Witson?
No, I have no concerns. The Miller family knows this business well, and I appreciate that they came in and went through the process of filing this application. I know the house. I'm sorry, I clipped the fork, left that house behind, but I'm glad it will be good to go to you, so visitors can enjoy that beautiful property the Miller family owns. I fully support the application.
Mr. Carney?
You do need to hear from the public before you--
Okay.
--jump too far down that--
Yep. Mr. Carney?
I will just echo, I will just echo what my colleagues have said, that I think it's an appropriate use for that house, and I think that the staff and Planning Commission recommendations, or conditions, rather, are appropriate. So I think it's a fine use for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fraser, before I open, public hearing, do you have anything?
I noticed that there was a mailing that went out to the neighbors. Were there any comments back from the neighbors?
No.
Didn't see any on the application. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Miller. I'm going to open up the public hearing.
Great.
Thank you. So at this time for public hearing, SE number 23-0601 Miller Tourist Home, anyone wishing to speak specifically to that special exception, please be recognized and come up to the mic and give us your district and your name. Yes, ma'am.
Mary Catherine Ishi-Piedmont. I just wanted to echo the confidence in the Millers on running this as a tourist home. I, as I've said before, am one of those who have some concern about the proliferation of tourist homes in the county for a variety of reasons, but I think if we're going to prove any, this one is certainly the one that's appropriate. I can see the property from my house. I know it's been lived in, you know, before, occupied by family. There's never been any traffic issues. There's never been any light or noise issues. It's always been handled very responsibly, as has the other uses on that property. And the Miller family has contributed a tremendous amount to the community by placing that land in a conservation easement, most of it, and it's going to be preserved for us forever right around Sperryville. And so I think this is a very appropriate use, given their demonstration of their responsibility and willingness to work with the community. And I also would like to thank you. I know it's not part of this particular application, but just as a resident of the Piedmont District, I'd like to thank Ms. Smith and you all for taking seriously an application for five tourist homes, which strikes me as almost an event center. So even very minimal restrictions, I think you could have put on a lot more, frankly, but thank you for those.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Anita Ramos-Hampton District. I want to echo MK and all the other people who've already spoken about the Miller family and how well they take care of their property. And this is a family home. His son is living in another place, but when his son comes home, that house will be available to him. So I think this is a very convenient way of keeping it open for the family and also being able to share it with the rest of the world. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Not seeing any hands in the courtroom. Anyone on the Zoom world wishing to speak, please raise your Zoom hand and be recognized. This is about this public hearing, this special exception only. Not seeing any Zoom hands. I will close the public hearing. And although we've all spoken, anyone wishing, yes, sir?
Madam Chair, I'm probably going to make a couple of people mad, but we really should be looking at land use issues and not personalities. And I know the Millers haven't owned the property for a few years or several years. They've owned it for several generations, I believe. So, but it's not, our land use decision shouldn't be based on personalities. It should be based-- All right. Not seeing any Zoom hands. I will close the public hearing. And although we've all spoken, anyone wishing, yes, sir?
Madam Chair, I'm probably going to make a couple of people mad, but we really should be looking at land use issues and not personalities. And I know the Millers haven't owned the property for a few years or several years. They've owned it for several generations, I believe. So, but it's, it's not, our land use decision shouldn't be based on personalities. It should be based on the use and is it a proper location? And so I don't want anybody to get mad at me, but that's what we should be looking at with land use decisions. Is it a fit for that property? Is it a fit at that location? And take the personalities out of it. If you went on personalities, y'all probably would never approve anything from me later on. So I just want to put that out there that, you know, we shouldn't go on personalities.
Thank you.
Mr. Fraser, I agree.
That I won't get anything later on?
He'll probably go to cringles on Christmas.
All right, roll call.
Well, this is in Piedmont District, so I would just make a motion that we approve this application for the Miller tourist home with the recommendation, with the recommended conditions from the Planning Commission, which echoed the staff recommended conditions.
I'll second your motion, Ms. Miller. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Do we need the roll call?
Not as long as I can decipher.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you very much. All right, number three, I believe, is RSM?
Yes. Ms. Summers?
The next public hearing we have is special exception 230501 for Risk and Strategic Management, who own 84 acres on Shergan Lane. They've applied to continue their current special exception permit that they have been operating under and which expires on October, or I'm sorry, September 5th of this year. Mr. Blythe, who is owner of RSM, has requested the same conditions, except for a time period of 10 years instead of five years. The Health Department commented that based on no changes to the existing permit, a history of compliance, and stated environmental protections in place. They have no objections. VDOT also commented they've had no objections, as they've received no complaints or been made aware of any issues at this location. The Planning Commission held their public hearing on this, also on June the 21st, in which they recommended approval by a vote of five to one, with the staff recommended conditions and placing a five-year time limit on the application. An applicant is present.
Could I ask if there was a reason for the dissenting vote?
It was me. Because I've never voted for it. Because I don't think it's a good use of that property, and I won't vote for it tonight either.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blythe?
So, yeah, we're applying for the same conditions, no changes. We've had zero complaints, apart from hearings over the last five years. We've complied with every condition required. Our training saves American lives. We train hundreds of people to go out to dangerous countries around the world, and we have anecdotal evidence to prove that we've actually stopped Americans dying. A classic example was Bikini Fasa Hotel, where the terrorist attacks killed 36, and we had one of our trainees in the, in the hotel at the time. I was talking to him all the way through the night, and the training actually saved his life. He wasn't one of the 36 who died because of the training. We also train around the world for the US government, so we trained 880 Nigerians for USAID last year, several of whom have been kidnapped subsequently, and they've survived the kidnapping, which is not a common occurrence in Nigeria. So not only do we save American lives around the world, we save other lives as well. We, we have been very, very compliant with all the conditions. We've taken significant lengths to reduce the noise. We've invested thousands of dollars into industrial noise blankets. We've done extensive noise tests. You can't hear us. We have hundreds of meters of wood line between us and anything that goes on. We have half-charged rounds, so you can't hear, you don't even have to wear hearing protection. We've invited all of the neighbors to come and visit our sites, and none have visited the location, and they've declined engagement, with one exception, which is Tom. He's a great guy over there, who has a different opinion, but I respect it. All the other neighbors who have complained have never taken the opportunity to talk to us, to talk about the problems, to tour the land and solve the issue. So they just complain whenever we have a hearing. We also have contributed to the local road. We've, we've put in 18, no, 60 tons of gravel, and we've contributed over $1.5 million into the local community with investments. We, we channel everything we can into local businesses, even if it's cheaper to go to Walmart, we will buy it from the local companies. There's a lot of erroneous reporting on our application. For example, Tim and Joyce, one of the prominent proponents of denying our application, described gunshots that rattled her residents late at night. We stop training by 5:00 p.m. We never do it beyond 5:00 p.m. We don't start until 8:30. We finish at 5:00 p.m. We do Monday to Friday. They claim that we camp on the land. We don't camp on the land. We have no live ammunition. It's a safety measure. We don't allow mingling of blank ammunition and live ammunition to stop any chance of an injury. They claim that we fire live ammunition, which is untrue. And we don't, the, the other claims are that we don't tell people when we're doing the training. We give typically three to 12 months' notice of any training activity, and then we tell people when we're canceling as well. So we're fully compliant. We think it is a reasonable use of land. Every board member, apart from the one who voting against us, has visited the land and spoken to us about it. I find it curious that Christine, you haven't visited the
I did visit you on Sunday evening. I came down and toured the property, and your neighbor saw me.
But you've never come with us.
That's correct.
So you've toured it without permission.
That's correct.
Without engaging us or asking permission.
That's correct.
I think that's inappropriate, but that's just my opinion.
Well, I think your use is inappropriate.
Sorry?
I think the use of the property in this manner is inappropriate.
I suggest that a board member making an informed decision, be informed before you make the decision. But that's just my opinion. And we, we also don't use the full usage. We have allowable 10 days a month to use the land. Today, we have 16 people training. We're allowed 30. Tomorrow, only nine will remain on the land. So we're not even using the full capacity. We just need the flexibility. When people say, hey, we're going to Ukraine to help out women and children being bombed by the Russians, we need to be able to train them at short notice within 10 days. I'd be delighted to answer any questions people have. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing, try to get it in the right order this time, for special exception 23-0501, the RSM permit. Anyone wishing to speak with this special exception only, please raise your hand and be recognized. Yes, sir. And when you come up, please give us your name and your district.
My name's Howdean Jackson. Order from Mr. Blythe's land. To start, Mr. Blythe and I have had many good conversations over the past years. He seems like a very nice person to me. Just because I do not want his training facility next to me does not mean I do not like him or what he's trying to do. I just do not think this land is large enough to do what he wants to do and not affect me and the other neighbors who live around this training ground. Something was brought up a little earlier I'd like to remind this board of. Originally, the zoning commission voted no for this. It was overruled by the Board of Supervisors at the original meeting, I'm thinking two and a half years ago now. So they did not follow the recommendations of zoning. Now, this time, it was approved by the zoning. I'd like to thank you guys that aren't mandatory that you follow that recommendation either. In support of that, fairness is something I was believe, I was raised to believe in, which should be strived for. Fairness is something I believe is important for a happy and stable community and to help put an end to discrimination. I bought my 103 acres shortly before Mr. Blythe. I submitted my plans for a house bill and going through this process for approval. It was stopped on January 19th until I signed a form stating at no time will I or anyone rent out any portion of my home. I was told this is because the county has had issues with bed and breakfast type businesses, perhaps tourist homes, since I listened to everything tonight. I was, I verified with the county via email that if I filled out this form, signed it, and then I would, I would then be able to have my plans printed, sealed, and brought back to the county for approval. The answer in writing was yes. I have this email with me if anybody's interested in seeing it. I was held hostage in building my house until I promised I would never rent out a room in my house. On 103 acres, I'm not able to have a bed and breakfast or rent out a home, something no one in my road would know or even be affected by. I'm not able to supplement my income when my kids move out, or when my mother passes, or when I become disabled. Next door, there's a business with a training ground on it that has 20 to 50 people on it, in a minimum, five times a month, over which the years many neighbors have showed up in this very room to say they don't want it for many reasons. If I rented out my room in my house, there would be added tax revenue, just in personal property taxes for vehicles, if nothing else. What is the tax benefit to this county for this training facility? Since I can't rent out a room, I can't build additional houses purposes for renting it. If I was to do that, the tax benefit, again, would be in county's favor. The amount of taxes I pay on my house is a benefit to this county and far outweighs training center with no permanent home on it. Fairness. Turns out my, turns my stomach that I live in a place where I'm discriminated against because I occupy my land and I live in this county. Here in these meetings, anyone can say whatever they want with no proof. They can't, they can't be questioned about statements by the residents. For example, I'd like to ask about the math on how much per sandwich Sky Cafe makes on their partnership with RSM. In the last zoning meeting, the owner said that he was able to hire a new employee because of this partnership. 50 sandwiches, five times a month, 250 sandwiches per month. If the profit is $10 per sandwich, it'd be equate to paying someone $30,000 a year, minus the taxes that they would have to pay on their income. I have a difficult time thinking there is a $10 per person profit on these meals, but perhaps I'm wrong. Perhaps it's even more. I know Subway doesn't make $10 profit per meal. I also know it would not make sense to hire someone, giving them all of their profits. So I would assume at most that person would be hired for 15K, not the 30K the owner, so the owner could have some reasonable profit on the employee. Perhaps he meant he hired someone on an ad-needed basis, and not truly full or part-time. Since we can't ask questions and ask for proof, we really have no idea. My point is, anyone can say anything, and they do not have to provide proof. Over the years, many neighbors have got up, and we do not want this for many different reasons. The two people I remember showing up saying they support. Both are in partnerships with RSM. They make money, so they show up to support RSM, and it makes sense for me to, for them to do so. I don't blame them. What does, what does not make sense to me is the tax benefit to having a house on that property would far outweigh the training facility. This facility does not benefit anyone in this county except two businesses. And since we can't ask for financials, we have to make some logical best guesses, like the profit on the sandwich exercise. It's fairly easy for me, and I would think anyone, that a house on this land would provide more tax revenue than this facility. For, for the county, if this is not about revenue, then what is it for? I can't out, can't rent out a room because of some previous issues this county has. I assume it was in meetings like this that these issues were debated. It is clear that neighbors have issue with the training facility. Many have showed up over the years to be told by the majority of the board that we do not care that you do not want this. We're going to improve it anyway. I think I, I think I've shown that it was not approved for the additional tax revenue. So, so, or at least at a minimum, raised some questions about how much tax benefit for this county there really is. So if it's not for the additional tax revenue, then why is it being approved when neighbors don't want it? Unfortunately, I'm not able to ask these questions of individuals that vote yes, then debate their reasons. As members of this board, I would think the most important question to you would be, how much does something benefit this county, and how much does it hurt the community? I would welcome anyone on the board to explain their position on benefit versus detriment. If you can't logically and clearly state the benefit, your vote must be no. If your vote is yes, you should be able to explain why I and others can't out, rent out a room in their home. As a person with power, you should be held accountable for your vote and state your reasons and defend them. In previous meetings, I have explained how our government has a facility like this. It's on 5,000 acres and has dorms, where there's tons of workers, tons of support staff, and benefits the county, where no neighbors are disturbed by any of this because of their sheer size. I worked on these programs during my career and sent workers to that facility, which included certifications, which must be earned by passing courses before traveling and representing our government overseas. I have mentioned this before because the average citizen may not understand the consideration our government gives to someone that is allowed to go work overseas. Having a government facility of this scope is a huge tax revenue benefit for its location. So the argument can be made, it's best for the county it's in. Previous meetings, noise issues, wildlife issues, road issues, explanations about our government overseas training facility, and I'm sure others have been brought up as a reason to vote no, none have worked. With all the failings, perhaps this tax revenue argument will work. Not too many neighbors showed up today. Death in the family prevented some. For others, already saying their piece over the years and getting tired of the same thing each time being voted against, maybe one day I will be the same way. Tired of war ramors, not caring or explaining how this is a benefit to this county. Tired of being defeated without a thought to fairness. Maybe I will give up one day, but I hope not. I was not raised to give up, even against large odds. Even the outcome is close to predetermined. Even if it's obvious, there is not fairness. If you were not around for previous meetings or forgotten, I would suggest it is easy to go back and watch the arguments for and against in all of these meetings, delay this vote by a month, and watch the previous meetings. I have asked you to consider why approve this training facility, which brings almost no tax revenue for this county. The headquarters for RSM is not here. The vehicles are not housed here. There is no house to pay personal property tax on. If it was not approved, most likely it would be sold to a family like mine, who wanted to build a house on a gravel road with good neighbors who keep themselves but are friendly. People would pay their personal property tax on their homes and vehicles to this county. If this is not about taxes, then what is it about? If you are still considering to vote to approve this, I would like you to think about how a rental of a room or a house is not allowed on 103 acres, and how it would be of instant tax revenue benefit.
Mr. Dean, will you wrap it up for me, please?
I'm almost there.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you are still considering voting to approve this, I would like you to consider fairness. Do you want to live in a county that discriminates against a homeowner who might need or want to rent a room out and not bother their neighbors? Or you can vote to approve a training facility that provides very little tax benefit to this county and only has the support of one neighbor who is in partnership with RSM and one cafe owner? If you're still considering about voting to approve this, I would like you to motion to open this up for a true debate at the following of this meeting, in this meeting where all parties show up with proof, proof that fuel and maintenance is purchased and wrapped and handed for vehicles used to support this training, proof of a person being hired to make sandwiches, proof of road maintenance paid for, proof of the benefit of this county. I am positive that at the end of that debate, it would be clear a single house sitting on that property would be of more benefit to this county. I myself have never had an issue defending my position of anything in my life. I am proud of what I stand for and what I believe. Everyone should be willing and able to defend their position, including this board.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
I'm Brian Adams. I'm just wanting to let it known that I know you made it out the other day. I'm not too sure if you've made it out there or anybody else. But the complaints that these people are complaining is definitely not it. I mean, I'm right there, like we see it. I encourage y'all to come out there when he is training, so y'all can see it for your own eyes. Mike does more for me, the settles, the Skyward Cafe, there's a couple other businesses here in the county that he does for. I don't think it's right that he should show you receipts. Me should take our word for it, is the way I see it. This is the better situation that we had, that he bought this, because if he's not using this property for what he's using it, he could go in there and put a bunch more houses in this place. And that's the last that we would need, more houses on that road. What's that mean? You have at least three more houses to go on this property, three more families coming in and out here, way more road traffic than what he's doing. He comes in there twice a month, two days a week, that's four days they run up in there. That's it. I got the slaughterhouse there. I have 20, 40 cars come in there a day. And you know, we're running the business. You know, some of these people want to move out here to retire. This is not a retirement place. This is a small business or county that, you know, a lot of small business work at every day. And I hopefully it would stay that way. That's just my piece, and I encourage y'all to come out there when he's training, so y'all can really see it for yourself.
It was nice to see you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Demaris Miller, Hampton District. I'd be the last person to speak against having houses on property or using agricultural land for agricultural purposes. But I have a number of relatives who serve in non-governmental organizations abroad in dangerous places. They need this kind of training, and it is difficult to find a place where it is available on the scale that this place offers. I am proud I am proud that we have in Rappahannock County a place that is offering this life-saving training for people who are serving abroad, especially in the organizations I'm aware of, the the Christian organizations that my relatives serve in. Um, I am I've spoken for this before. I see that it is the kind of thing that is can be divisive in a community. It's difficult to accept that there are things that have to be done that make noise or sound dangerous. The world is dangerous. We have good people doing good work that requires training to protect their lives. If not here, where?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Ron McLeach, Jackson District. Uh, I spoke in opposition to this permit when it originally came up. What Mr. Blythe does is an important, you know, thing that needs to be done in in this world, in the world we live in. But the location that he chose is not appropriate. It's there's a residential road on one side of the property, a residential road on the other side of the property. It's just the wrong place. And I posed the question to the planning commission when they voted on this last time, and I said, if you had to live adjoining this operation, would you vote in favor of it? And I'm posing the same question to the members of the board supervisors. If your property backed up to this operation, would you vote in favor of it? Thank you.
Thank you.
John Capioli, I think I'm in Hampton District. Um, I really didn't come tonight in order to speak about this, but then as I listened, I thought it was interesting. First, there is no noise ordinance in this county, never has, never been, and if somebody proposed one, they get strung up. The next thing that's interesting, I remember a year, two years ago, where this county proudly announced that it was a two A county for gun rights. I come from up north, right outside New York City. I've walked the Bronx at two o'clock in the morning. I hear more gunfire in this county than I do in the Bronx. There's no complaint about it, just duck. One of my neighbors has a propane cannon for his corn crops, and I hear that thing run all day. The first couple of days, I was like, what in the world is that? Can't complain about it, no reason to complain about it. It's effective. So when I hear people say, oh, well, you know, we live next door and we hear these noises, but they're allowed. They're legally allowed, and I've seen this board vote to allow them. Vote to have no noise ordinances. Vote for the possession and the use and training of weapons, which is great. But why all of a sudden, when one person comes up, does this become bad? Gunfire noise and training of how to use weapons. Doesn't seem right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Not seeing any hands. Let me go to Zoom. Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak, please raise your Zoom hand. All right, not seeing any hands on Zoom. I'll close the public hearing and open it back up to the board. I know Mr. Blythe would like to speak. Um, Mr. Fraser, it's your district. Would you like?
Yeah, uh, the gentleman has spoke at length. I appreciate you not cutting him off, Madam Chair. I I have to say that he's got me asking a few questions. Mr. Curry, could you elaborate on what he was talking about with the?
I I cannot. I don't know the situation he went through five or six years ago. I'd be happy to talk to him after this and try to better understand.
The building permit problem?
I I don't know. Maybe there was an in-law suite or something that raised the interest of building and zoning. I can't speak to that, but I'd be happy to address it with with Mr. Dean.
Yeah, um, I'm I'm in a I'm in a quandary because uh, two of the board members of of the of the three majority that that approved that are still on the board now. We we don't have Mr. Parrish. He was seceded by Mr. Carney. But I think the gentleman asked a very good question. If this isn't about tax revenue, could the two remaining members explain why they think it's a good idea to have a have something like this on their property? Madam Chair?
You're asking.
You voted for it?
I did. Um, I can tell you that the businesses that were referenced have I've talked to. Um, he does go out of his way to use settles for ice and his drinks and everything he gets. He gets from there, and he doesn't go to Martin's. He doesn't go to Walmart, and I heard that from the settles family. Um, I do know Skyward gets a lot of his business for lunches, and I don't know what price he pays, but what cash flow goes into a business like a restaurant is very welcomed, especially at the time of year when things may be slowing down or whatever. So, um, I've also been told when Skyward's not available, he goes into Sperryville. And so I do believe he's doing his best to support the community and the businesses in the community. Also, from everything I understand, the noise that he, his company does, that the half shell or whatever you call it, is much less than the shooting that goes around my house on a regular basis. Um, so I really, the question about would I have this in my backyard? Sure.
But you voted to put it in somebody else's backyard. And this is my quandary. It's now up for review and renewal. And without any substantial complaints, I'm not sure how it can be turned down.
Mr. Curry, right now, I'm the other one on the board who supported it last time. So would you mind if I just respond quickly to your question?
No, no, I I I expect you to to, if you would, sir. But I but I know one of the 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 other member, if if you could, the the other member that voted for it, he voted, uh, in lobbying against having a dog training facility next to his five hundred acre farm. So, you know, it's just, uh, again, we're back to personalities where instead of instead of the proper use and the proper location. So if you could, sir, you could you could answer that question that the gentleman posed.
Sure. Um, I know I said just two days ago that I wasn't here to answer questions, but you asked a really good one, so I will. I think I think first of all, just in general rule, it's dangerous to conflict separate issues. And then allow that to cloud our decision making on one application like this one. So, um, bringing up Mr. Parrish and the dog kennel application, I don't really see where that squatters with something completely separate apart from that. So I just I think that we have to be careful to try to put our weight on it. And to to your earlier point, keep personalities out of it. I agree that with with the speaker, and I apologize for not catching his name. I'm not there physically. I thought he did a really good job of laying out from a revenue perspective. I think a logical cost benefit analysis that any reasonable decision maker, like those on the board, would have to engage in and determine whether an application like this makes sense for a community. And to that end, one one area where it caused, and I asked Mr. Blythe this question when I went out recently and visited his property, come with him and one of his colleagues, was, and I and I should have known this, and I admit that I didn't, and I'm glad I asked the question because it definitely gives me pause now, and that is, from a from a property taxation standpoint, how is this property taxed? And I haven't dug into it further, but Mr. Blythe was quick to say it's in land use. And I that that bothers me. And it bothers me because what we've done is, through our zoning ordinance, we have agreed that this is nominally a commercial use of this property. That said, because it is a commercial use of property, I I will follow up with the revenue commissioner. I met with Mr. Blythe maybe two weeks ago, um, so I haven't had a chance to follow up. But I will ask the revenue commissioner, and perhaps just put it on the record now. I can ask that she, um, review of the taxation of that property. Because i- in my view, as a basic principle, a person should not have a but land use. That is, it it might be in forster use, and it might be subject to benefits in our land use taxation program. But if it's also commercial use, then it seems to go to the point of the very articulate speaker we were promoting that what what tax benefit is the county receiving from this? I've also been very pointed with Mr. Blythe to point out that the numbers that he put forward regarding revenue generated or revenue contributed to our community are a little bit, um, this, I don't want to say misleading, but it's, we're not talking about about direct tax or benefit to the county. We're talking about money contributed to businesses, and that is incredibly important. And I appreciate, uh, the speaker from Adams Custom Slaughter, who pointed out how important this account is to his business. And I know the settle family also benefits greatly and also the others at Skyward Cafe. So I don't want to dismiss at all the indirect benefit to the county because of the contributions in the local businesses from a business like RSM. All of this aside, I come down to the question of what has happened in the three and a half years or three years since we approved this permit with a a very cut and dried, line in the sand review period in which we are now? And from what I can tell, um, there have not been any complaints from neighbors regarding their lives being upended or disrupted or otherwise, um, changed as a result of this use. Again, I come back to, all right, we've approved the commercial use on this property, and I appreciate so much my constituent Demaris Miller, who raised a really good point. If not, if not here, where else would a company like this operate? So if we can be business friendly and provide a platform for business like this to operate without disruption to neighboring properties, then I think we've been, we've done a really good job in, one, supporting a small business, and, two, doing it in a way that, um, those in Turner County on end were be disrupted toward neighboring properties. And to the extent that we have not heard any complaints, the zoning administrator has not heard any complaints during this period of review. And given the importance of providing businesses like RSM with some certainty as a plan for the future, it seems to me that for us to come to a review now, after a period of no disruption, no complaint, no problems, to now move the target again is, I would say, anti-business. We we owe it to businesses to give them a set of rules when their businesses are conducted within the parameters of this special exception like here. And those rules, unless there is a significant disruption to our community, must remain in place, period. And for us to move the target after some period of time when nothing changed, when nothing happened, when nothing bad occurred, is absolutely anti-business. And so unless someone can come to me and say that this project or this operation in the last few years has done something other than what we require them to do, it would be a disservice to my constituent joint center of the county to vote no on this. They they have not done anything against what we asked them to do three years ago. So that's all I have. But I will, I will point Mr. Curry to your comment about the revenue and and very articulate speaker's question about the cost benefit analysis, analysis in which we should engage. And I agree wholeheartedly that from a property taxation standpoint, and, you know, perhaps somebody would argue that this is anti-business, but from a property taxation standpoint, it is, it is now, it has now become a commercial property. So to that end, I would at least raise the question with the revenue commissioner to ask whether land use taxation classification in this case is appropriate. So, thank you.
If I could ask a follow-up question based on what you your comments was, uh, I I don't understand. You're you're talking about moving the, uh, moving the bar. What 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 was that about?
Uh, what that's about is we, very much like Ms. Smith, I think appropriately applied a review period condition on the earlier special exception personal application for forster on F T Valley Road. Here, we did the same thing three years ago, and we called for review after, I believe it was a three-year review period.
And the planning commission is asking for five now. They're recommending a renewal period of five.
I I think the applicant applied and then came in for a minor change to his, uh, conditions, and the board authorized that change in conditions, but only extended it five years from the initial permit. So the first permit was for five years. It just had action two years ago. It was a little confusing.
May I answer the question?
Well, I I think I can add something to that, though. A a tree is a tree, whether he's standing behind, shooting behind it, or or is just standing there by itself for twenty years. But the the thing is, I think the commissioner of revenue, and I'm not trying to speak for her because she's not here, but they probably have carved out the lanes and and, you know, where there's, you know, the the facilities that they have there, and that is being taxed appropriately. But a tree is a tree. So I I don't know how you could you can say that.
And 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 it just, it's that that part of the fact pattern struck me as odd that we would have a commercial operation that's in land use.
That is a good question.
So, um, just if I could just finish. So, Mr. Fraser, um, I mean, that, I I want to address your question about moving target. So again, put simply, we put we put a review time period on the, I guess it was the second permit that RSM received. And that time for for the time limit, rather, um, we're now at the end of it. And I have not seen anything from the zoning administrator or otherwise to suggest that Mr. Blythe and his company have done anything to violate the terms, the conditions, the limits placed upon the operations of RSM on that site during the two-year period. And so to that end, as a local government representative in a little county in Virginia, I don't think it's appropriate for me to now change my mind and say, well, you know, I wasn't thinking clearly black path then, and and now I am, and so, yeah, we're not going to approve this permit. All I'm saying is, absent complaints, which is really the purpose of the kind of review period that Ms. Smith put forward earlier on the tourist zone of T Valley, and here again with RSM, we need, we need to look at the evidence, and the evidence is not there. There's.
I I didn't recommend that. I think you're going down this rabbit trail that I didn't recommend to start with.
No, no, you asked, you asked, you said you didn't work, you didn't understand what I meant by moving target.
Well, I think the planning commission, the planning commission's recommendation for five years, I think, is what we should be looking at. You're you're not.
That's my, no, I'm just, I apologize.
Are you not okay with that?
Yeah, I'm I'm okay with five years, ten years, whatever the board decides. It's in your district. If you want to lead the charge on a motion, I'll have.
Well, I I have a problem. I I don't think it was a proper location, but I don't, now that y'all approved the permit, I don't know how one could vote against it without some compelling evidence, as you said, that that things haven't been done properly.
If we could, I'd just like to.
So incredibly, this is, this is where incredibly we agree. So incredibly, this is where incredibly we agree. And I'm so happy to agree with you.
As long as we're incredibly agreeing on a five-year review period from this point forward.
I'd like to.
Whatever you want, I will follow your lead. I just, you asked about the moving target and what I was saying is, what I should have said is, I would, I will not now deny this permit.
I'd like to let Mr. Carney speak if we can at this point.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep, thank you. Mr. Carney? We got you. You did.
Thank you. Yeah, sorry. I would just like to say that as a, as a business owner, owning a business around Hannah County, for those who don't know, I own a farm brewery and farm cider with my brothers. Not everybody's thrilled with average tourism. Not everybody's thrilled with the production of alcohol. But at the end of the day, you know, folks have to make a living. Folks do. And as a community, zoning requires us to take all these things and look at them and weigh them. I had the opportunity to go out and have Mr. Bligh give me a tour of the property and to just quickly attend to what Mr. Whitson and Mr. Fraser were talking about in terms of land use taxation. I would assume, as Mr. Fraser pointed out, that the lanes and the clearings and where the sheds are, aren't being taken out of Forestry, as is the case of where the brewery is. Our parking lot is not in land use. But I had the opportunity to go out there with Mr. Bligh and he walked me around. I'm going to be honest, but I didn't really understand what it was that they did. I sort of went there not knowing. And I would just like to echo what Ms. Maris Miller said, that these folks are doing powerfully good work. I've traveled overseas, I've been to the Middle East, I've been to Africa, I've been to South America. We are lucky to live in a country that is as safe as the United States can be. And there are a lot of folks that travel, that happen in the United States doing our work, doing our diplomatic work. And it's the mission of RSM to help these people stay safe. I did not really know that before I went in and looked at it. I thought it was more of a tactical training place. I was completely wrong. That is not what it is at all. Honestly, it reminded me more of Rocky and which I used to go to Boy Scout camp. And, you know, nothing's in the ground, they're just sheds on skids and stuff. So anyway, I toured with Mr. Bligh and I had, I thought about the neighbors and I hear them, I really do. I genuinely do. I think it's very difficult. It's just like the previous permit we did, we've got five houses that were now sand yaddy and turn them into a completely different use. This stuff is hard to do. But I got a loss when after five years and zero complaints, we would tell a business owner, you can't plan for the future, you can't make an investment. There's a big difference between five and 10 years. I would wholeheartedly support 10 years because I have a very difficult time seeing why we wouldn't. That's just my perspective. I get it, these things are tricky and they're divisive and that's the work that we did. So, that said, and Mr. McIlroy, I just wanted to, he said, I would absolutely approve this next to my property. What I thought it was, when I thought it was something it wasn't, probably not. But when I went there and I saw what they did, I'm a gun owner, I shoot a lot, I'm a hunter, you know, they don't have a lot around center. And I shoot a brewery all the time and I probably, you know, annoys the neighbors. Sorry, maybe you guys can hear that. But the point is that, yes, I would, after seeing what this actually was, I would approve that. I would if it were next to me. So I just think that, I think Rapid Hennig needs to be business strength in the right way. I really do, I'm a business owner. It's incredibly important. And I know it's tricky, we're not always going to get it right, we're not always going to do it the right way. And we have a unique champion in how we zone. We are very tight. But like Mr. Fraser said, it's been a number of years and there have been no complaints. And so I just want to say that I would, wholeheartedly support 10, I would push for 10 because I think it's the right thing to do for them. But it's Mr. Fraser's district, so I'll always leave. Thank you.
I just wanted to say a few things.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I think we all did receive a petition from the neighbors that opposed this application. So to just act like we haven't heard anything against this application is simply not true. We know that some of the neighbors are out of town for personal reasons and unable to attend this evening. And I will say there was quite a bit of comment at the Planning Commission level and it was very heated. It was he shed, he said, and, you know, it was, tempers did flare. And I would just say that that's not the way that I want to work in this community. And I think that the actions of the board a few years ago have led to bad feelings between the neighbors and that's a failure, a zoning failure right there. And I would say that neighbors have told me that they don't want to complain because they feel like with the majority of the board supporting the landowner, there's no point in complaining. Their complaints fall on deaf ears. I think the company is very nice. Obviously, their cause is an incredibly lofty cause and they do good work. There's no debating that. We all know it and feel it to our core. What we are talking about is land use. What we are talking about is putting a school in an agriculturally zoned area. Your business, Mr. Adams, is an agriculturally geared business, which warrants the activity at your business in that zoning district. In my opinion, and it continues to be my opinion, and if it's my opinion alone, that's fine. This school does not belong in an agriculturally zoned area down a little dirt road.
Thank you. Mr. Fraser, I know Mr. Bligh.
Yeah, we could let the gentleman speak. Obviously, he thinks you want to address.
Yeah, this is a rare opportunity, but hopefully I can relay some concerns or fears with facts.
Could you please just address the word?
Yeah, sorry. So we rigidly track our expenditures into the local community. I'm more than happy to share it with you guys, I've shared it before. I don't think it would be appropriate to disclose other people's financials to the general public, I'm sure the general public wouldn't want that either. But you guys can definitely see it and you can see where the money's going. So this is not a fictitious amount, this is real money going into the community. There was a mention of the size of the land. The reason the other training sites are a little bit bigger is because they have racetracks and ranges. We don't do racetracks and ranges, so the land is actually bigger than we need. We use probably about one-third of it, frankly. And we use it sensibly to create noise barriers in between the neighbors and us. So the land is absolutely big enough. I've trained in 45 countries, I've trained in Yemen, Libya, you name it, I've probably been there. And I've trained this type of training all around the world for commercial and engine crews.
Ask a question, I interject, by racetrack, you're teaching people to drive.
No, no, I say the bigger sites, not our site.
Right, but the reason that they have that is for like evasion driving.
Evasive and tactical driving skills. So if you go to Agara at Montrose, where they train lots of African nations and Middle Eastern nations, and they have 500 acres, this is potentially the comparison. They have defensive driving areas, so they've got big racetracks, they've got ranges up to 300, 500 meters. This is why they need 500 acres. We don't have any of that. We have 85 acres and it is more than sufficient. I've trained this course on five acres in Africa. So we have ample space, this is why no one sees us or hears us. We try, we support over five businesses locally and we grow in that. The reason that the number is quite high is that we have a 250-person training conference center in Warrington. So we do lots of other training, but we bring in all the food and all the drinks and all the other materials from here into Warrington for those courses there. We only spring small groups here. That's why we're pumping so much into the local community, because we have that capacity in Warrington. And again, I invite anybody to come and have a look if they're your neighbor. Ms. Smith, Ms. Smith, you're more than happy, I'm more than happy to show you around and maybe you'll change your mind if you see it and hear what we're doing on the land, potentially.
Thank you.
Again, I'm in a bit of a quandary. I voted against it the last time, but I'll put forward a motion to renew the permit with the Planning Commission's recommendations of conditions, including a five-year renewal period.
Discussion? Or I guess you need a second?
Yes. Are you a second?
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Okay. I noticed that it would appear to be several junk cars on the property. Are they junk and inoperable cars?
No, they're used as training aids. So what we've done is we've shot into them on another property, we've moved them here, we've taken out all the oil, made sure they're environmentally clean, and they use to demonstrate we're not to hide behind a car if you're being shot out in Africa.
Okay, that was going to be my question, is if they'd been drained?
Yes, yeah.
Because y'all are clearly on a pristine lot.
Absolutely. We go to significant, and you would have seen as you walked around all the signs saying respect Rapid Hennig, environmental.
Yes.
Yeah, we take everything away.
Are there cameras on site?
Are there what?
I mean, you have signage up that there's cameras recording, are there cameras recording?
Absolutely. So we see lots of deers running around and we make sure.
But you didn't see me the other night.
No, we did see you.
Well, then why did you say I hadn't been to the property?
No, with me. I've offered you multiple times.
I mean, I think I've heard you six times in these public hearings. I think this is our sixth or seventh public hearing together.
I've never had the opportunity to show you around the property myself to explain and answer questions.
Yes, I understand your mission and I was able to see myself around the property.
I would, I would query whether, unless you're in the sector doing this kind of training, that you would have been able to visualize exactly what happens where, which is why I offered to show you around.
I guess we'll just have to agree to disagree.
Absolutely.
I did see a large bottle of Captain Morgan sitting on a barrel on my way in. Is that something you use or?
That's to cheer me up after these board meetings. No, that is a prop because the individuals drive up to an illegal corrupt checkpoint where there are drunk soldiers who give them a hard time. We don't drink on the lot. It's a prop.
And is the property gated at all?
No.
Would you consider gating it?
Absolutely.
I think that some of what I hear, and the only way that I can reconcile this in my mind, between the neighbors who say that these things happen and these things don't happen, is that there may be people going in there doing things that you're not aware of.
We do have cord bikes from some of our neighbors driving through the top end. We try and be open to them. We have, the Hunt Club is on the other side, they go through part of the land to get to the other part of their property, they don't shoot on there. So we're trying to be very friendly with the neighbors, we don't allow shooting there.
Well, I just wonder if part of this, you know, when I saw the bottle of alcohol on the property, I wondered if people were coming on the property and maybe using it unbeknownst to you.
No, we have cameras, so we check it every week.
Okay.
That was a concern I had as well, but I was, if you can, you know, make sure that that's remedied, that you don't have people coming on there as a party spot.
Yeah, we'll put a gate up, not a problem.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Nay.
Thank you. All right.
Now you have to stay for the rest of the meeting.
I would suggest that maybe we take a five-minute recess.
Do you need one? Okay. We're going to take a five-minute recess. We're going to continue now? Go ahead, Ms. Jew.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to make this summary due for both of the next two public hearings, if it pleases the board. The fiscal '24 budget, as adopted by the board, assumes the rates for both the food and beverage or meals tax and the transient occupancy or lodging tax would increase from 4% to 6% starting in October 2023. The staff has since, since the budget was adopted and with additional information from the Commissioner of Revenue related to updated assessed value data, staff has reforecasted the revenue for fiscal '24 and at this point believes that the tax rate increases are now not needed during fiscal 2024 for those three quarters of the fiscal year. I will note that because the fund balance was used to balance out the budget for the first quarter of fiscal '24, we will begin the fiscal '25 budget development process with approximately a $60,000 deficit without the increased rates. The reforecasted revenue in fiscal '24 largely stems from additional expected real estate tax revenue, additional expected personal property tax revenue, and additional expected revenue from interest earnings.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing on the, I guess we have to keep them separate, amendment for food and beverage tax rate. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized and come up and give us your name and district. All right. Not seeing anyone in the courtroom. Yes, sir? Now I'm seeing someone.
My question is, we're raising the tax rate from four to 6% to close a budget gap. Part of that budget gap is probably from the, what is it, $250 million that didn't get appropriated to the state education system. And we need to pay for the education system, absolutely. Will this tax be reversed once the state budget is corrected and passed and those monies come to the county? Because it's supposed to be making up for a shortfall. When that shortfall is corrected, will this tax revert back? Because according to Mr. Curry's numbers, the tax at 4% has been quite significant in contributing to the county's budget.
Anyone else? All right, not seeing any hands in the courtroom. Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak with regards to food and beverage tax rate? Please raise your Zoom hand. All right, not seeing any Zoom hands, I'm going to close the public hearing for the food and beverage tax rate and open it up to the board.
I have.
Madam Chair, it's your voice, I'm sorry. I just wanted to thank a couple of my colleagues. First of all, we were in a very difficult budget situation earlier this year in springtime and I think Ms. Smith wisely proposed that we increase meals and lodging tax rate as a way to cover that deficit. And I think it was really a good idea at that time because we were able to keep pressure off of our property owners and bought ourselves some time. And then I also want to thank you, Madam Chair, for coming up with the idea of bridging the gap once we got to budget adoption and covering that first quarter of potential lost revenue by not raising the meals and lodging tax rate, using our fund balance, which is quite healthy. And I thank the Treasurer and the Revenue Commissioner for all their work in that regard. And finally, I want to thank Mr. Carney for identifying the robust interest income revenue that has been generated in what is otherwise a not very positive interest rate environment for many of us, but it has benefited our locality in the sense that what was once a devenous interest revenue number in our annual budget suddenly became meaningful. And Mr. Carney, and I know he talked directly with, this is a kind of misery jewel in this regard, identified the potential for covering any revenue deficit that we might otherwise cover with the meals and lodging tax rate, maybe if you're something Smith proposed with additional interest revenue that had the recent increase by the pose or would have not existed. So I think gratitude really from my standpoint goes all around everyone for thinking outside the box. And I think citizens should recognize in the end that we're now in a position where property tax rates have not increased and meals and lodging tax rates are not increasing. And. And nobody jumped the gun, so to speak, so gratitude to all of my colleagues.
Thank you. I think, Mr. Fraser, you were going to say something?
I did. I had a comment or two to make and then a question if I could ask Ms. Jewell a question. And I hate to put you on the spot, but I always say that just before I put somebody on the spot. But to Mr. Capielli's question, if I could, have you ever seen a tax increase that was reversed? Well, that's just a question, but anyway. If I could, what is this tax revenue that we're making off of what we have in the bank?
Excuse me. Yes, so the budget as adopted assumed interest on, excuse me, interest earnings at $280,000.
And that was on how much money, if I could?
On how much, how much is in the bank?
Yeah.
Well, the fund balance at the close of the last fiscal year was about $7 million. And of course, that ebbs and flows as cash comes in and cash goes out. But at the close of fiscal '22, it was about $7 million. We don't have a final figure for the close of fiscal '23 at this point.
I'm just wondering, would this even be a discussion, the $60,000, whatever we're looking at, if the county actually held on to that money that's being, that we sent for the Northern Virginia Regional Commission, Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission, to hold for the broadband build-out that's not going to take place for another two or three years, it looks like? Would we be even considering trying to find $60,000? Or would we already be making that revenue off of interest on that money that we have?
That's whatever percentage we're making on $1 million for whatever period of time. So it's hard to, too many variables, I think.
But that is a question that people have asked me.
No, it's a good question. I agree. I mean, I understand that our money, our money is staying in an escrow in a non-interesting account, which is unfortunate. Whatever the rules are, that's a different question, but I appreciate Mr. Fraser asking it.
Yeah, somebody needs to ask it. I mean, that's the problem. We have a public hearing, and some people are afraid to ask certain questions. But, I mean, that's been asked me, and I thought it was a very good question. I'm just asking the same question.
Certainly, we would be gaining additional interest. I can't, I can't give an exact figure at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Of course, the terms of the agreement are what they are, and there would be consequences if you didn't live up to the agreement. So there's apples, oranges, wrenches, all sorts of things in play.
But I'm just pointing out that I don't think it was a good agreement, again.
I think the record reflects that.
Any other comments?
I would just say, just to accurately reflect the tax cycle happenings, when we were a half a million dollars short, I thought something like this would be preferable to a real estate tax or a personal property tax increase. But certainly, because this is something you choose to spend rather than a necessity that you own to be taxed on, I do think it is preferable to those taxes. But at the end of the budget cycle, we were so close, we were able to whittle down to $200,000, and the rest of the board was unwilling to make cuts. And I do think we should have reconciled our shortfall with cuts rather than entertaining this tax increase and certainly by advertising this tax increase when it became apparent that we didn't need it. I know we have $60,000 to reconcile for next year, and I know we've talked about the revenue from unpaid tax sales and how to recognize that revenue. Has that been recognized on the books yet?
There is some assumption of that within fiscal '24 budget, within real estate. But then also, there's the waiting period after certain sales, and now you have to go back and address with the Treasurer what that waiting period is.
I seem to recall we expected it to be, to eventually be about $200,000.
Some of those landowners could retain the property if they come forward.
Sure, there's a lot of variables. I just think it would be a no harm, no foul solution if we could identify about $60,000, maybe in that way. Certainly, it's a small enough amount that we can absorb it without any problem if it doesn't come to fruition. But it does seem like it would be a logical way to kind of bridge the gap with that dollar amount assigned to it.
And to answer Mr. Fraser's question, interest earnings at 4% on a million dollars over the course of the year would be somewhere in the range of $40,000. That's Google, so don't count on it, but he makes a good point.
Mr. Carney?
Yes, thank you. I would just really like to thank staff, Mr. Curry and Ms. Jewell for working really hard in the scenes to pull these numbers together. I think you guys did a fantastic job in what, in my short time. And I think by all accounts, it's been a very strange budget year. So I just wanted to thank you all for thinking outside the box and being able to do this. You know, I support properly funding our schools, and so I pushed for it. And I will continue to push for properly funding our schools. So thank you for figuring out a way to do this, and I hope next year. Well, let's just hope the General Assembly gets the budget done, sir. Thank you.
Absolutely. I do hope the General Assembly is watching and reading that JLRX study very closely. I, obviously, coming from the restaurant business, did not want to raise taxes. Even if it is a penny on a cup of coffee, it still adds up when you're a small business. So I'm glad to also thank our staff as well as Treasurer Nick because the interest that has increased has helped us considerably. Anyone want to make a motion?
I don't think we need to.
No?
Yeah, so certainly, if there's no motion to adopt the ordinance, it doesn't happen. Motion's always in order if someone wants to vote for the negative, but it is equal.
Yep.
Effect.
If no one wants to vote positively on this, we can just move next to the next one.
I'll just, for the record, I'll put forward a motion that we kill the proposed increase, the meals. We're on meals right now, not lodging.
Food and beverage, correct.
All right. I'll put forward a motion that we kill any plan to increase the meals and beverage tax rate.
If I could interject, Mr. Whitson, just for a second. Now that we've advertised, we've had a public hearing, with your vote, that would essentially, using your terminology, would actually kill the ability to do something if all of a sudden we found ourselves needing to increase the, I would say the lodging tax first instead of the meals tax, but either one of them. Whereas if we just simply don't do anything, then we still have the ability to bring it back. You're taking a tool completely out of the toolbox and throwing it in the trash can instead of just leaving it in the bottom of the box.
I suppose you could, you could tailor it, just say, to oppose passing this ordinance today as presented. Or do nothing. We can move on to the next one.
We have a lot of people here tonight. I think we should just move on.
Mr. Whitson, you had made the motion. What would you like to do?
Well, I think we should be done with it to bring certainty to our community and our small business owners. I'm hearing objections. I'll just leave alone.
Okay.
I didn't want to advertise it in the first place, but we have a courtroom full of people that want to be heard.
Yep. All right, moving on to the public hearing for the ordinance amendment, transient occupancy lodging tax rate. Anyone wishing to speak? Yes, please come up.
Sherry Fickle, Piedmont District. I hope that this one will go the same way as the meals. We have, as a lodging place that also serves breakfast, we currently tax our guests at 9.3%. This would make it 11.3%. And while this is a beautiful place to come, that's a very, very high tax to be asking people to pay for lodging. And if it's not needed, I would also appreciate that we kind of end the possibility of it coming up again without going through a little more effort. If it could just be revived at a moment's notice. It's also actually a burden, I don't want to say burden, but it takes some administrative work on us. We take reservations as much as a year in advance. Those people aren't paying that tax. So with the threat of it being raised or the possibility of it being raised at any moment, it actually does cause some issues with us. So I would appreciate not only that this one go the same direction and not be enacted, but perhaps also be made a little harder to just pull back out at any time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, George Son at Hampton. I also hope that this increase dies for inaction, but slightly different reason. Transient occupancy tax is, in my view, a completely different animal. The first 2% is discretionary as far as, and I may get this wrong, but the first 2% is discretionary? That's great. When you go over 2%, the next 3% is not discretionary. It requires promotion of tourism. So in the, in what the matter of this before you now, a 2% increase, one would be discretionary, one would not be discretionary. I frankly don't want my local government in the tourism promotion business, okay? As a 32-year, full-time resident, tourism doesn't do anything for my quality of life. It, it's, to me, it's a drip, drip, drip diminishment of my quality of life. That said, I just hope we don't get to where we have to spend more money promoting tourism. We're already at 2%, and I'd ask that it not go above that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not seeing any other hands in the courtroom. Anyone on Zoom left that would like to speak during this public hearing on the occupancy tax? Please raise your Zoom hand. All right, not seeing any, I'll close the public hearing and open it up again to the board.
Trying to speed up the process since we have more work in front of us. I think we should just table this and move on.
Thank you.
Table?
Table implies that you're going to pick it off the table at some point in time. So just pass it by without any action?
Yes. Pass it by with no action.
But I would just state for the record, I don't have any intention of bringing either of these things back. And I mean, I hear what people say about tourism dollars, and I would just state for the record that we, as a county, try to use that tourism marked revenue for things like security around tourism. Or if there's additional officers needed, it would be something that we would be already incurring, and we try to use those dollars to cover those costs, using them in a very sensible way.
All right, hearing no one else wanting to move forward on this, we're going to jump into the next public hearing, which is the ordinance amendment sign ordinance. And for Mr. Whitson and Mr. Carney, the room is still pretty full.
Can we have just a housekeeping exercise, like a show of hands, how many people would like to speak? So we know how long, maybe we should look at asking people to speak for?
We can. It's either three to five minutes in my vote. So how many of you are going to wish to speak? All right, so it's three minutes. Okay. All right, so if you'll look at your notes and think it through, we're going to do our best to stick to three minutes per person.
So how would you like to progress through this item? I'll let Bonnie step down now that we're done talking about money.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Drive safe, Bonnie.
You're not going to make her stay?
Do you want to speak to this at all?
Yeah, so it's up to the board. The board is where, staff did pull together just a short bit of highlights on the changes for the board and community review. It's there. I assume you've reviewed it. I'm happy to go through it during this meeting. If you'd like to jump straight away to receiving public input, that might be appropriate as well.
Well, I hate to hold the public up, but maybe you giving a brief, if possible, breakdown of what we're doing, it might change a few comments because of disinformation that's been out there.
No, our citizens are very well informed all the time, so I doubt I'll change. But I will.
Oh, you did put together this slideshow, and we would hate for that to go away.
Right, well, you know, that's what Saturdays are for. So just, we all know why we're here. That's to amend the sign ordinance. Of course, there's a public hearing that's been noticed, and newspapers required by the Code of Virginia, and it's part of the zoning ordinance, so that's Section 1522204. And before you consider an amendment, the Planning Commission must review and consider and pass that on to the board, which they have already done. And we've been working on this as a community for years now due to Supreme Court ruling in Reed versus Tannen Gilbert. And in a big nutshell, the Supreme Court generally said we shouldn't be regulating signage based on what the sign says, content. There are some exceptions. And so our current ordinance does that pretty well, divides things up based on what they say. The new ordinance is reorganized, and it's been through multiple iterations with the Planning Commission, reviewed by the Berkeley Group, back to the Planning Commission staff, myself and Mr. Goff. And so it now lays out similarly to how it was before in Article 12, with the general organization being definitions, which is where you figure out what a sign is and isn't, a listing of signs that are prohibited, a listing of signs that are allowed but don't require an application, and then basically a general statement that says you need an application for every sign except for the ones that you don't need to get an application for. And then several sections, 101, 102, 106, and 107, actually regulate what type of signs and what size signs are allowed in different areas of the county. So in big picture, what is a sign and what is not a sign? The Planning Commission leaned on the Virginia Local Government Attorneys Group to pull that definition from their recommended ordinance. And it's generally what you would think a sign is, but there are two big carve-outs. And that is, it has to be visible from a public place, public right-of-way parking area, somewhere that's generally open to the public, or from an adjoining property. So if the sign's not visible to somebody other than your private enjoyment, it's not a sign. And then, secondly, and this is a big point of discussion with the community, is the work of art. And so a mural or other typical types of artistic impression are carved out of the definition of sign. And so the kicker in all this is that it can in no way identify or specifically relate to a product or service. This can't be a commercial mural, and there's some case law on that. There's been some discussion in the public about billboards. So billboards are prohibited. As I noted, there is a section about prohibited signs, and one of them is billboards. Yes, the definition of billboards has changed a little bit. The current ordinance allows off-premise directional signs through special exception. And this ordinance does expand things to allow different types of off-premises signs. So any off-premise sign is not allowed unless it's expressly allowed in 17102, which speaks to these off-premise signs that are, one could apply for through special exception. And an example is this sign down 231, which today technically is not allowed, has been there for years, and we have this sort of sign around. And so the question is, as a community, do we want to allow this sort of sign that's not on the premises of the business to allow business to advertise their goods rather than just the sign that says Jenkins Orchard is that way, which would just be a directional sign? And this proposed ordinance suggests allowing any business who has applied for and received a sign permit for their premises to apply for two off-premise signs up to 32 square feet, such as the one that you see here. A lot of times, we see signs away from a business that are in the right-of-way. VDOT does not allow any signs in the right-of-way. VDOT does not allow any signs in the right-of-way, they're all illegal. And so nothing here changes that. Temporary signs, this is also something important to many citizens. The current ordinance, and I'll say this was the impetus behind Reed versus Town and Gilbert, was temporary signs. Our current ordinance states that temporary signs shall not exceed 50 square feet, 10 feet in height, and that, and there's some word issues in our current ordinance, they be allowed for not to exceed 30,3 consecutive days. However, no temporary sign shall be allowed for more than 60 days per year at any location for the purpose of advertising and opening sale or special event. 60 days doesn't imply if you are other than advertising and opening sale or special event. And the, the real issue for enforcement is, it's 30 consecutive days. So I have my little sign put in the ground, 29 days later, I pick it up, I put it over here. And so how does anybody enforce whether some thing's been in the ground 30 consecutive days? And that's essentially, you can have a sign forever, from an enforcement standpoint. Mr. Goff and I really tried to rack our brain with, how can we regulate in a way that's fair to the businesses and community out there, in a way that is enforceable? And so what the proposed ordinance says is you can have five temporary signs per lot in all districts, not exceeding a total aggregate of 50 square feet, same number as we have now, and a height of eight feet, which is a little shorter than now. And the temporary signs must bear the date of first data's display on them. And that's a big change. So if zoning enforcement goes out into the field and sees a temporary sign, and it doesn't have a date of first display, it's illegal. If it has a date of first display and it's more than 100 days old, it's illegal. So it's much easier to enforce, whether they pick it up and stick it in a different spot or not. Now, they can get a renewal for up to 100 days from the zoning administrator, and arguably they could put a new date of first display. So temporary signs are hard to regulate. And we have many of them out around the community, whether it's hate has no home, or this or that, or watermelons, as you see in the image here. Commercial zone animated signs. So there is a category now in our zoning ordinance which is prohibited, which is animated signs. That's anything that blows in the wind or blinks lights any more frequently than once every hour. This ordinance seeks to carve in the allowance for animated signs for certain commercial businesses if they're in the commercial general, commercial highway, or industrial zones. Open flags, technically illegal today under the current ordinance, but they're everywhere. These feather-type signs or anything that's less than 15 feet tall, 50 square feet, and would be included in the permanent amount for that business. So they can have five of these, up to 50 square feet aggregate, and that would come out of their overall signage. This is an option, the community might or might not like this, but they're out there and have been out there, as you've seen in the last couple photos. And I think a lot of feedback on the temporary hay bale signs. It's another situation where it's a phenomenon that we've seen, and we have some decisions to make. Are we going to legally go fight to keep them away? Or are we going to try to regulate what we get and defend that situation? The sign, hay bale sign that popped up most recently with 67 bales, and for different reasons might be illegal under this ordinance, because it's limited to 25, and there's some dimensional requirements. These are, require a setback on primary highways of 200 feet, so that's Route 211, 231, and 522, or 100 foot setback on a secondary road. So, you know, we can ignore them and then prosecute somebody who puts it up, or we can regulate them and then at least try to put them in a box and guide their development. These are options for our community. We talked about public art real quickly. So the proposed ordinance completely excludes it from the definition of sign, which means the zoning administrator has to review each application for a message and decide whether it's a sign or not. If a mural pops up, she might have to review it to determine whether it's a sign or not. Does it have that commercial speech, speech in it or not? Does it have a trademark image in it or not? And that's tricky, but no matter how you lay this out, there's going to be some subjectivity in place, which is why, for all matters of zoning, an aggrieved party can appeal to the BCA, and then appeal to the Circuit Court, appeal, appeal that to the Virginia Appeals Court, and then appeal that to the Supreme Court. And there's an avenue for redress if, if somebody is aggrieved. I know that there's a lot of debate on whether there should be ordinances in place to put a box around art. I think you run into some of the same issues you would have, whether you regulate it or don't regulate it, but there are definitely two options, or multiple options to handle it. So that's, that's as quickly as I can go through that.
You did great.
Many people had many comments, and we've listened, so thank you.
You'd be willing to do that again on another day.
He needs water, I think. All right. I think we'll open this up now for the public hearing, and please do your best to keep it at three minutes.
Sally Haynes, Piedmont District. Thanks for the hearing. The big question about the proposed ordinance is, why would we want to put up more signs, animated signs, bigger signs, and keep them up for longer periods? We can stop regulating sign content without blowing up the sign ordinance. Due to inconsistencies, you can read the ordinance several different ways. Right now, I don't have any signs on my property other than a house number. The way I read it, this ordinance would allow me to put in my yard five temporary signs, a couple permanent signs, as many flags as I can fit, any size, any height, and most anything I can, I consider to be art. And it's not just my yard, this is every lot in the county. The good news is, I'm thinking about opening a sign business. I have written you already suggesting that we include dark skies, lighting requirements in the ordinance, and I've also expressed concern with moving art out of the ordinance, and I do have some more examples, and I will provide you on that. In conclusion, please don't increase allowances for the number, size, and duration of temporary signs. Do include dark skies standards for lighting. Don't exempt art unless you create an art ordinance, which I would favor. Don't turn hay bales into signs, and don't exempt flags. And please give the public more time to give you more feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Matthew Black, live in the Piedmont District. Thanks for allowing us to come in and make some comments on the proposed sign ordinance. I happen to be president of RAC, which is the arts organization, and our mission really is to foster the, foster the arts in, in the county, with the overarching goal of building and sustaining community through the arts. We sent you a letter, I hope you have that in your packet, and I just wanted to quickly summarize a couple of the points. First of all, we do support the language in the proposed ordinance that clarifies that works of art will not be classified as signs. And that language, as Gary said, came from the local government attorneys of Virginia that were, that was trying to help the counties address works of art in the wake of the Supreme Court decision that prohibits the regulation of content of signs. We believe that works of art are important to the county, inspiring, enhancing the aesthetics of the county, and they should be encouraged and allowed without permit. Second, we recommend that temporary banners be exempt from the permit requirement when used for special events. RAC and many other nonprofits have used temporary banners for years to announce and direct people to a variety of public events, like the art tour, the farm tour, concerts, and so forth. Banners are greater than the four, four-square-foot requirement that's allowed for temporary signs not requiring a permit. We propose that banners up to 24 square feet, typically three by eight in size, that we propose that those sized banners up to 24 square feet would be placed under this temporary sign exemption. And we'd also add, as long as they were up for less than two weeks. And typically, they're up and they're down. And that would make a big difference for us. And then in addition to these two points that were in our letter, we are hearing some concern that the carve-out for, for works of art can be possibly abused, that people could come up with, with undesirable signs under the guise of art. Painted some pretty colors and called it art, but we don't like the message, profanity, who knows? But the Supreme Court makes it hard now to regulate that. But fortunately though, I think over the years, I haven't seen this, signs really greatly abused, I haven't really seen a huge problem. Maybe the one exception recently would be hay bales, but you already are trying to, to regulate the, the size and duration of those. But I would say, but when I do think, I heard the 50, the 50-square-foot limit on signs, 50 square feet, but if you had 25 hay bales, five feet in diameter, that's 500 square feet. So that's 10 times the size. So I'd hate to drive down 211 and see those on every other corner, competing with each other. So I see that as a potential carve-out that, that is troublesome to me. Appreciate your work, and if there's any other further work to be done on this, we'd be happy to help out.
Thank you.
Damaris Miller, Hampton District. We don't live in a pure democracy. We cannot, as a majority, decide we don't want certain kinds of signs or certain kinds of speech. In fact, we live in a democratic republic based on a constitution. The First Amendment of that constitution protects our right to free speech. There have been objections to the hay bale signs. Most of the objections to the very large hay bale sign last year, or a couple of years ago, were because of the content, because those who supported that candidate kind of liked the sign. But content is not what we're talking about. We're talking about free speech. The hay bale signs, if it is not commercial, if it is not paid for by any candidate, if it is not paid for by any political party, is free speech in its purest form. It is provided by the most unique rural art form. I'll repeat that, a unique rural art form to give this type of free speech to the property owner. If my neighbor wants to put up a hay bale sign 50 feet long saying, "Damaris Miller sucks," that is my neighbor's right, and I support it. We may put some kind of limit on how long these signs can stay up, but I would make that pretty broad. We used to say that we had elections on one day, now we know that they go on for years, and the election process goes on for years. And let's face it, part of this discussion is about political signs, which really don't fit into those commercial categories. Let's remember that the most important way we protect our nation and all our other rights is enshrined in that free speech. And that unique rural art form should be protected by this uniquely rural community. Thank you.
Hi, Deborah Moore, Jackson. I'm all for free speech. Many things historically have been labeled free speech that we now would never allow. We also have in this country a strong tradition of equality under the law, and we don't have two laws for two different circumstances. Now, for the signs and the hay bales specifically, it seems to me that we do, and I think we need to talk about that. I understand that we have different laws for residential and commercial, but when we're talking about hay bales that can stay up from, let's see, if we do the 100-day, the 100-day, it would be September 2nd until April the 10th, two-thirds of the year. And if we're talking about five-foot-wide hay bales, and usually actually they're about five foot, five inches, we're talking with some little space between them, about 200 feet in length. And the only difference I can see between the hay bale and the other signs which have a limit, which has been well thought out, it sounds like, is that they're not made out of paper or wood, they're made out of hay. Now, why is there a different law? I don't understand the common sense or the logic of this. Why is there a different law if it's on hay or if it's on wood? That's my question. Thank you.
Sheila Gressinger. This is really funny. The only thing I will say about the hay bales is that the cows eventually eat them, and so they're gone, and we have a very happy bunch of cattle around here. So I think it's a self, it's a situation that's self-correcting. I don't think it's a problem.
This is from my neighbor, she couldn't be here, she might not introduce it to the public record, and then this is the letter that I emailed, but just to make sure that it happened as well. I'll adjourn my speech based on the five minutes we talked about, so I will try to whiz through it, do the best I can. My name is Karen Hunt, I live in Amosville in Jackson District. So you've got the letters from my neighbors and I. I understand the need to update the ordinance, I've read and compared both the current and the proposed sign ordinances and the Berkeley report. We are known for and pride ourselves in our rural nature and our view sheds. We are intentionally a scenic county. Our comp plan has the word scenic in it 53 times. We have eight designated scenic byways, as well as historic districts that could be impacted by additional signage. I recognize and appreciate the effort made to amend the sign ordinance and to comply with new legal requirements, but I'm very concerned that some of the proposed changes created, create several new sign categories and significantly increase the amount of signage that would be permitted in the county. I know we want to protect view sheds while balancing rights, but some of what is being proposed, proposed is very problematic, specifically lines 173 through 179, and lines 238 through 241. The exclusion of any form of art or flags of any nation, state, or geopolitical entity from any limits in size, design, location, or duration that are applied to other signage. Why should these types of signs be treated differently and exempted from regulation? With regard to art, basically anyone could put up what for all intents and purposes is a sign and call it art. Someone could put up a whole bunch of huge flags of any size at any height. There is wide variation in lot and parcel size throughout the county. We need to have some limitations here, or this could wind up becoming Pandora's Box. Lines 208, 207 to 208, and lines 477 through 482. Animated signs are currently prohibited, but proposed changes would now allow animated signs in commercial and industrial zones. Do we want large, fluttering, rotating, moving devices in commercial areas of the county or signs that only blink once an hour? This new proposal would allow up to five signs of up to 50 square feet, up to 15 feet in height. How does this fit with Rappahannock as a scenic county? Lines 312 through 318. We would be increasing the number of temporary signs per parcel from what is in, what is one in most areas now to five, up to 50 square feet, and the duration has been significantly increased from 30 days with a possible 30-day extension to a proposed 100 days with another 100-day extension. This is a huge change. 365 days a year, this goes- This has the potential to effectively blanket the county with more signage for a much longer period of time. Lines 319 through 350. Regarding the new hay bale sign designation, in trying to address the past experience, I fear we are opening, opening up a huge, hyper-visible sign issue for a hundred to two-hundred days a year. Why should hay bales be given preferential treatment? Defining it by number of bales and completely omitting a maximum aggregate square feet limit is hugely problematic. The Berkeley report on page two points out a number of significant issues with the proposed hay bale language. The size, scope, and duration here are excessive. Setting aside the permanent versus temporary nature, this has the potential to effectively permit what is akin to a billboard. Hay bale signs should not be treated any differently than any other type of temporary sign. And I just want to make a quick distinction here, because we've used billboard a lot, and people have thrown the term around. When we're talking billboard, I know there's a technical definition, but the public perception of a billboard is something big and in your face. So I think that's important just for reference. Almost done.
Got a minute left.
354 through 356. For off-premises directional signs, why has the special exception requirement been removed? Doing so removes the opportunity for public input. There may be locations in the county where an off-premises directional sign is deemed problematic by residents and property owners that zoning administration may be unaware of. Continuing the special exception requirement allows constituents to have a voice and bring relevant information to the county's attention before a decision is made. Line 271 through 81. Regarding advertised vehicles, I suggest that trailers be added here, as in vehicles and/or trailers. It is noted as vehicles/trailers in line 224 through 226, but is just vehicles in line 271 through 281. It may also be wise to include some tables for clarity for different zones, particularly the commercial and industrial zones, as suggested in the Berkeley report. As an administrative aside, you'll want to fix the alphabetical designations in line 218 through 224, as G is out of sequence, and lines 383 through 384. The proposed ordinance only mentions one valuation method now, so you'll want to remove the whichever is less reference, which was the valuation of real estate, which has now been changed. Also wonder of 242, minor signs, it would make sense to add the not exceeding two square feet in area, again here for clarity. I urge the board to consider the consequences and impacts, unintended or otherwise, that some of these proposed changes could have on what Rappahannock looks like going forward. It is so important that we get this right. I think the proposed sign ordinance needs more work before the board supervisors consider it. I ask that you please delay any decision here tonight. People care a lot about this issue, and there's a lot of detail here people are still trying to absorb. We need more meanings to work through this. I would ask you please leave the public comment period open, so citizens can continue to provide meaningful feedback as we try to improve the current draft. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
First off, I'd like to say that I think the first line in the sign ordinance should be that signs in Rappahannock can be no bigger than thirty-two square feet. If you look around, that's an average size, it's a four-by-eight sheet of plywood. That's all we need. You can't put it on that size, then, you know, figure out something. But that's the first thing I ought to be there. The other thing I want to talk about is the Berkeley group review. There's been very little talk about the Berkeley group review. We paid them forty-five hundred dollars to review the ordinance. They recommended thirty-eight changes, and they, if you read through them all, they are all well, well-worded, valuable changes that need to be in the ordinance. We didn't, we ignored twenty-seven of them. That's seventy-one percent. Why, why did we even bother with sending it to the Berkeley group and go four or five hundred dollars if we're not going to, you know, look at what they've sent us? That's their job. They write ordinances, and they gave us all these good recommendations, and they weren't put in the ordinance. And just to go through briefly, under recommendations of legal significance, these are things that are, you know, give us problems in court or whatever. There were five recommended changes. We made one slight change in one of them. The rest of them were ignored, and what were ignored was flags, temporary signs, hay bales. They made recommendations on all these things, which is what everybody here is talking about, and they're not in the ordinance. One other thing in there, where to go, the hay bale signs. Anyways, the, you know, I think, I've been, I've been to most of the meetings, and I haven't heard any, any talk about this amongst the planning commission or whatever. It seemed to me publicly, they, they should have had a meeting and gone over this and discussed this. Didn't happen. I think it needs to go back to the, back to the planning commission and do some more work, and then bring it back to you, because they, I think, people that are here tonight have, quite honestly, probably done more homework on this ordinance than the people that are presenting it to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on. Go ahead, Mr. Capielli. I'll get to you.
John Capielli, Hampton. Is this like when you go to 7-Eleven, you get a bunch of coffee, you can get punched every time, then you get up, and that the seventh cup is free? No. When I first heard about the ordinance, about the signs, first thing I thought about, I had just ordered thirty job site signs from my construction company. They're the standard that everybody uses. They're eighteen by twenty-four, and they have two little pins, and you stick them in the ground. I've got a couple of mountain call pepper. I've got two of them on Clark Lane, next to a co-op, building a road there for the wiring. There's one down in Fauquard County, next to the Baptist Church that we're remodeling with volunteers, and I was worried that I was going to get in trouble for them. So I contacted Mr. Curry, and Mr. Curry said not to worry. The way that the ordinance will work is you can date it and put it on there for thirty days. This is why the, the road over here next to the co-op has been going on for months. He says, well, then you pick it up and you move it and you redesign it. And theoretically, you can keep it going forever. Fifteen years ago, before I moved to Virginia, I was in Greenwich, Connecticut, and they proposed an ordinance to get rid of all of the signs, all your, except if they're going to be up for ten days or less, for a carnival or special event or something like that. And the biggest one they were looking at was for property sales, for real estate agents, because they were everywhere. There were sixty-four thousand homes in twenty-seven square miles. So you saw them everywhere. And we all thought, and our contractor signs and things like that, and we thought, oh, this is going to be a big problem. You know what? In six months after they enacted it, and they were all gone, there was no problems. So here you are, out here in a lightly populated area, and they're talking about these new sign ordinances. Some of these signs, you're saying, are fifteen feet tall, that wiggle in the wind along the side of the roadway. I find five hundred square foot hay bale signs or things like that. Ron has it right. Four-by-eight sheet of plywood, that's big enough to get your message across. I tried to build one, and I built one years ago for demolition, and even I thought it was too big. After I made it. Of course, they did all the lettering and everything else. It looked really great in the shop, and we brought it out, and, and two big pieces, because it was steel, and we set it up, and we're like, man, that thing is just huge. So maybe this thing is being rushed a little bit, even though it's taken a long time, but I think it made its way to the public comment, and the public comment's not long enough. I think several people said we need to have a little bit more into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, board supervisors and others. I'm Tony Van Aker from Castleton Stonewall Hawthorne District, and I want to congratulate the staff for making the revisions to the proposed ordinances to bring it in compliance with the findings of the Supreme Court case Reed versus the town Gilbert. But I think that the proposed revisions tend to go far beyond constitutionality, and I'm a citizen of this beautiful county that we live in, we call Rappahannock, and I have some concerns about the unintended consequences of these proposed revisions. I believe that, you know, we live in a county with a unique rural county, and that should be preserved while we have a chance to still preserve it. Now, I agree, we're lightly populated, and probably we're not going to get a lot of takers on this new signing ordinance, sign ordinance about proliferating signs, but it does open up opportunities for doing so. There were, I didn't get a chance to go through all the documentation like I would have liked because of the time constraint that we had, but I did find five or so things that caught my attention. One is the increase in the number of temporary signs, and that's been talked about a lot tonight. And, you know, you've got to wonder, well, why five? Why not three? Why not seven? What's the rationale behind it? Then there's the time limit of temporary signs. It was increased dramatically. I'd like to know a little more rationale about the reasons behind it. Art has been exempted. Now, my good friend Matthew here talked eloquently about art, and I'm not against art in any shape or form, although one would ask what art is and what art isn't, and that is a very motive subject. So the exemption for art may go in a direction that we don't want to take it. Some art is designed to send a message. Does that become a sign? Some art is not equally appreciated. Some art becomes bordering on profanity or some other vulgar approach. It needs to be addressed somehow, and just exempting it may be, may be an opportunity for it to be abused. But I like art. I'm not sure I want a five-hundred-foot-long pair of scissors on the side of the road claiming this is the biggest pair of scissors that anybody has on display, like you see in some places. Hay bales, oh, boy. I grew up in a rural community back in my younger days, and I find this to be a very unusual category of sign, if you want to call it that. And it certainly does not apply to counties like Fairfax or Arlington County, but it has a unique limitation. It's set back from the road about two-hundred feet, so anything you put on it, the letters have to be big, and you have a twenty-five-character limit. You can't say much. You can say more and tweet. So I think there's room for compromise. We're a rural county, and I think there's a bit of an allure of a hay bale sign of sorts. And the last category of, is off-premises signs. They're essentially, in my book, new billboards, but just a little smaller. I'd like to know a little more of the justification for these. So I don't profess to be a signing ordinance, a sign ordinance expert, and I didn't have enough time to go through all the revisions with a fine-tooth comb, but given the long-term implications, I think the board of supervisors should propose a sixty-to-ninety-day extension be granted so that more public opinion can be captured and plowed into a revision, and then we can have another public comment period on the final ordinance. I don't think that we have to rush tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I haven't made it all the way through this proposed ordinance, so that's on me, but I'd want to touch on a few things that jumped out at me as far as I got with it. One thing I can point out is billboards are defined in state law, and they're really a subset of off-premises signs, so there may be some confusion with that. So I just point that out. One man's artwork or mural is another man's advertisement. One man's directional sign is another man's advertisement. So I think that needs to be looked at closely. The hundred-day extension on temporary sign permits talks about for good cause, and that's put on the zoning administrator, I believe? That, that, please don't put that on the zoning administrator. There's no, that's just too arbitrary. Either hold it at a hundred days or, or something like upon further application, it's extended, but don't, don't put on the zoning administrator something about good cause. Lastly, I think lastly, well, two things. One, the hay bale signs, what that does is gives those that have the space and the availability of hay bales a larger megaphone. Okay? I'm all about free speech, but those that have that ability should not get a bigger free speech megaphone. Another way of saying it is, all pigs are equal, but some pigs are more equal than others. No, you can't do that. Last point is that you need to be aware that the state has preempted regulation as far as signs near roads. I think it's within six hundred feet, and of course, that's commercial signs, that's advertisement. So you have to be careful that you don't step into the state's territory, because the state approves a lot of that type of advertisement. To sum up, I, I suggest you close the public hearing, refer this back to the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I don't think that we can proceed at the moment as if public and, the public and political climate isn't rough right now. And our current signage policies seem to protect our First Amendment rights to free speech while giving us guardrails that reduce abuses of each other without limiting the ability to have a voice and be heard and have your First Amendment rights fully protected. I mean, we wouldn't have a signage ordinance if we didn't feel a need to protect the peace and the beauty that surrounds us, and that makes this place so attractive to people of every political persuasion, including conservatives, liberals, and folks who identify any other way they want to on the political spectrum, for instance. Do we really want to move from flags to hay bale signs that say, "F. this candidate" or supervisor or president? Do we want to promote that to kids on school buses and guests who come to the county for peace? I mean, there will always be abuses of, abuses of policy and of each other, but do we really want to invite them with a change of ordinance, create that megaphone that the gentleman referred to? Recognizing what little remedy exists for offenders of any kind and where the signage is concerned, particularly private citizens doing something on their own property, I would seek to minimize the difference between regular and hay bale signs, for instance, and possibly consider codifying what Damaris, Ms. Miller, mentioned in terms of something not paid for by any candidate or campaign. Just consider that language. I'm not saying that I know it's a good idea, but I'm a marketing person, I have a communications agency. I could easily see somebody setting up as a major part of a strategy of a political campaign, using hay bale signs all across the country in certain districts that are going to be prone to one point of view or another. So I just consider the climate that we're in and do our best to hold up what we have in place to keep, to encourage respect for each other's many rights and privileges and have a basis on which to support them. I don't think anyone who's lived here their whole life ever thought they'd be navigating signs that are patently offensive just to drive through Sperryville or park their car at church.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Rick Kohler, Hampton District, and I'm here representing Rappahannock League for Environmental Protection, RLEP. It's been really enriching to hear all these comments, different, all coming from different directions. Obviously, a lot of thought by just a few citizens. And I think there's a lot of citizens that have not even, didn't even know there was a sign ordinance until about a couple of weeks ago. You know, not everybody reads the rap news. Not everybody reads all the, whatever's going on, but they care. People are away right now. So I think it's important that we take our time with this. RLEP, our mission is to preserve the natural resources and rural character of Rappahannock County. We welcome and appreciate the opportunity to speak. A sign ordinance is a complex thing. The Supreme Court case effectively nullified our current sign ordinance as it was content-based. But if there's one thing that everyone in this room and in this county can agree on is the fact that we love the beauty and rural nature of the county and do not want it to change. Signs are obviously important to businesses in the county. They are needed and welcome. RLEP supports reasonable signage. The Supreme Court stated that content of signs could not be regulated. However, physical attributes such as size, location, materials, lighting, motion, and more can be regulated. The average temporary-sized sign to be permitted in agricultural areas is 32 square feet, a sheet of plywood. Commercial properties are allowed up to 50 square feet. For some reason, hay bales are allocated special treatment. In the new ordinance, they may contain as many as 25 round or square bales. Presuming the average round bale is five feet in diameter, 25 bales amounts to a 625-square-foot temporary sign when packed tight. For visualization purposes, 25 5-foot bales equates to a 5-foot-tall, 125-foot-long sign, almost as long as half a football field. Or a 10-foot-tall sign, 62 feet long, or a 15-foot-tall, 41-foot-long sign. Do we want these on our scenic hilltops and beside our roads? Further, the time limit for all temporary signs, including hay bales, is set at 100 days with an extension of up to another 100 days upon showing good cause. But the language for hay bales is slightly ambiguous and may be interpreted to mean a 200-day renewal rather than the intended 100. Do we really want temporary signs that linger for 200 days on our hills and roadways and all around the county? Is that scenic? We do value scenic values of this county. Perhaps the board could consider changing the time frames for temporary signs, maybe 60 days with a 60-day renewal. This is all, should be looked into more. It also does not seem clear, as Mr. Sonnet noted, that the zoning administrator is supposed to determine if there's reasonable cause for the time limit of a sign to be extended. There is no clear definition. Therefore, all signs will sit for the full duration of the extension. On another point, the board should carefully review other language about signs. Currently, balloon signs that squiggle all around and rotating signs, perhaps flashing or neon signs, might be permitted. This can be controlled. We should be, we should be, definitely have downshielded lighting on the signs to protect our spectacular starry skies. Many people knew nothing about the ordinance until recently. Everyone deserves an opportunity to review and comment. RLEP respectfully asks the board to postpone the decision for 60 days so the public can truly absorb and study the sign ordinance, and the changes can be carefully studied. We are scenic county. It is important to all the citizens that we stay that way. Further, we ask that hay bale signs be treated the same as any other temporary sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Catherine Ishi, Piedmont. Thanks for your patience in sitting through all this, everybody. Controlling outdoor signs is probably the most important step, oh, excuse me, Mary Catherine Ishi, Piedmont. Controlling outdoor signs is probably the most important step a community can take to make an immediate visible improvements, improvement in the physical environment. Almost all America's premier tourist destinations have strong sign ordinances because they understand that attractive communities attract more business than ugly ones. That's a quote from one of the nation's most renowned land use planning experts. Our planning commission got it right when they recommended at the beginning of this process that we should not expand on what we already have. It has been suggested that there are a few signs in our county that are not authorized and never have been, as well as a few others that have appeared while we have been in the process of revising our sign ordinance over the past few years. This is not a huge problem. The answer to it is to simply clarify what is allowed. A few isolated unauthorized signs here and there around the county should not cause us to rewrite the ordinance to start allowing them universally everywhere and every parcel throughout the county. Yet this appears to be what the proposed ordinance is aiming at. There are quite a number of fairly substantial expansions of our current sign ordinance in the version recently approved by the planning commission. That was never the plan and shouldn't become it now. I provide a detailed written comments and won't repeat all the specifics here. Three minutes is clearly not enough time to go into that. Those written comments identify some, but by no means all of the areas where allowable signage has been expanded. I urge the board to ask our planning staff to take out any areas of expansion and to work more closely with interested members of the public to revise the proposal to more accurately reflect our current scheme. We owe a debt of gratitude to our planning staff for the commitment and effort it has taken to get us this far. We all want to preserve the scenic beauty of this county for tourism, for our own enjoyment, and simply because preserving its unique beauty is the right thing to do. One of my favorite stories from the county, and I can't tell it as well as she could, but was when Sharon Pierce was chair of the planning commission, and they were revising the comp plan. And she said, they, at that time, wanted to add the language in that we, the citizens of Rappahannock, declare this to be a scenic county, and all policies, goals, and principles would rest on that fundamental cornerstone. And John McCarthy at the time said, Sharon, you can't do that. Richmond's going to laugh at us. And she said, well, I'm going to do it anyway. And we did. And I was down, as I told the planning, the planning commission in my veterinarian's office in Lou Ray a few weeks ago, and they were lamenting all the development that's going on in Page County. And I said, yeah, I know, we're facing some of that in Rappahannock, too. And they said, well, yeah, but the difference in Rappahannock County is that you all have restrictions. That's how people talk about us. That's our reputation. That's what brought so many of us here in the first place, and that is what's kept so many of us here, generation after generation. And it would be really nice if we could keep that reputation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane Bruce, Sperryville. I hope you don't make a decision tonight. I hope you will continue this. Somebody said 60 days. I'm thinking 90 days, maybe a year. There's a lot that's gone on. I think that, that this ordinance is more and more confusing. It's difficult to find things here and over here and over here. I also think that if you do agree to continue the meeting tonight or the decision, I'm not sure that the best place to send it is back to the planning commission. They have already, as I understand it, worked on it for a couple of years. They already know and have produced what they think is the right thing. It surprises me that the planning commission did not adopt very many of the recommendations from the organization that was reviewing it on our behalf. So I think the planning commission is well-informed. They know what they want you to do, but I think you've learned tonight that there are a lot of people here who don't necessarily agree with those things, who were unaware this was going on. So I hope you do not make a decision tonight. I hope you have work sessions, perhaps jointly one, joint ones with the planning commission. But I feel like the Board of Supervisors are the ones who should participate in work sessions to bring this to a conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think we're good in the courtroom. Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak, please raise your Zoom hand and be recognized. All right, not seeing any hands on Zoom, I will close the public hearing and bring it to the board.
I'll be happy to speak on this first, as the board's representative on the planning commission this year. I think, as most folks know, this has been with the planning commission since, I think, 2019. And it was put kind of on a pause through 2020, at which point we made it a focus of both bodies to work on a comprehensive plan. We decided to prioritize that item, to get that through first, because if you don't have a plan, you're not going to get anything done. So that was the plan in 2020, is we got the comprehensive plan through, and that was a very critical piece of the puzzle. And the sign language, sign ordinance language was to be the next thing that we work on. It went through several years with Mr. Whitson as the chair of the planning commission, and I was the board appointee and the chairman of the planning commission this year, and have been happy to guide the work on the sign ordinance. I do think that the planning commission has done its due diligence on this document to make recommendations for language that the board can accept, reject, or change as they see fit. You know, the planning commission is not the elected representatives, and as we hear from folks, we should make any of those changes that we see fit as board. I have to say, as someone who has seen this as a long process, I hear and emphasize with people that your lives are very busy, and this hasn't been at the forefront of your life for several years, but it has been at the forefront of my life for several years. And so I am happy that we maybe have 60 or 90 days left to conclude this exercise. And I, as always, look forward to lots of vigorous public input as a part of the process to guide our decision-making. I would just like to address briefly a few points that were brought up in public comment this evening. I did just want to mention that we were very glad to have Mr. Kohler as the representative for the Jackson District for several years on the planning commission. I think the sign ordinance was assigned to you for several years, and I know we weren't able to guide it to conclusion with you helming it, but I do believe we have done a lot of diligent, good work on the sign ordinance. The Berkeley Group review, we relied largely on staff, including the county attorney and the county administrator, to negotiate the details of the Berkeley Group review and what were critical details and should be put in, and what were perhaps not critical details and should be excluded. But several of them we had discussed as a planning commission, including hay bales, as to what may or may not fit for Rappahannock County and to leave it in or take it out. And really, I think we all feel that that was a board, I know I feel that that's a board decision. Hay bale signs specifically say, only exclusively non-commercial speech may be displayed on a hay bale sign. We would be foolish to try to regulate non-commercial speech anyway. What we had was a record, I don't want to say record, probably a record for Michelle, number of complaints when the hay bale sign went up in the county. What we tried to do as a planning commission was give our zoning administrator, in the event that a hay bale sign comes up that can be enforced, a tool for enforcement. That's what we tried to do as a planning commission. And yes, it is a substantial number of hay bales, but yes, the setbacks are also substantial. If I remember correctly, they're basically what it would be to erect a house on the lot, if I recall correctly from that conversation. So it's not going to be on every corner. It can't be done. It's 200 feet on one side, 100 feet on the other side. So, you know, we carved out the language as best we could. Whether the board includes it or not, or changes it, is up to the board. Lighting is addressed in other parts of the ordinance. We embrace, obviously, the dark skies sentiment as a county. It's certainly a spirit that we embrace. To make it part of the sign ordinance would, I think, be cumbersome, but it is, but lighting is addressed, because I know I've had folks complain about the sign lighting in my district, and I've registered their concerns with the zoning administrator before. So lighting can be addressed in other ways. Flags, although we hear a lot about flags tonight, we discussed at the planning commission, a better way perhaps to deal with this is to regulate flag pole height instead of regulating the size of the flags themselves. Animated signs include a lot of the signs that we've heard concerns about tonight, the balloons and the wiggly-jiggly guys on the car lots and all those sorts of things, flashing signs. Those are all a variety of animated signs, so those are addressed in the changes to the ordinance. Those are my notes from the comments. And I just want to say that the, we did not have a unanimous vote at the planning commission. Ms. Ritter did vote against this version due to the hay bale sign inclusion. And I did tell her I would be sure to mention that at this meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Fraser?
I think we should, excuse me, I think we should postpone voting on it tonight to perhaps clear up some of the typographical things that have been pointed out in it. But, you know, I'm not going to vote to put any kind of restriction on flags. They're already addressed. I mean, I've had people tell me that they've never seen a flag too large. They have seen flag poles that were too short. So having put up 75-foot-tall flag poles in the past, I kind of tend to agree with that, but not everybody's going to put up a 75-foot flag pole on their property. I happen to like the U.S. flag, put up a bunch of them all around the place, as far south as Williamsburg, Richmond, yeah, all over the place. Put up a lot of them. But anyway, I, I don't know, I think it's because of the content of those hay bale signs that everybody's all up in air over them. Point of order. That's, that's my comment. I listen to y'all's without interrupting you. But if it's, if the hay bale sign is the size of a house, then what's the problem? They don't understand that. You can paint a house red, white, and blue. I didn't interrupt you either, Diane. I did not interrupt you either.
Please. Thank you. Mr. Fraser?
It's a public hearing that was closed. So my comments are that I think the planning commission did a good bit of work. I agree that we should not have had any restrictions on the flags. The hay bale sign, I, I guess since Mr. Goff had had a hand in working on that, that he must think it's legally enforceable. So, I mean, I, I only heard good things about those hay bale signs. I really did. So, and there's only, what, three of them? I think there were three of them in the county at the time.
I can recall two.
Two? I'm thinking there was three, but I could be wrong. So I, I think that when we conclude our business for tonight, that we simply maybe set up a, I don't know about a work session, but at least a, a method by which we can go through and make sure that there's no typographical errors in what we adopt.
Thank you. Mr. Whitson?
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thanks. Practical question maybe for Mr. Curry. Is Mr. Goff there also?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
In terms of postponing a decision to waste our clock here based on a planning commission recommendation?
There's no clock on the, on the determination. The code of Virginia allows the board to change the ordinance. Mr. Goff and I have discussed that, and we believe that the cleanest way for, if there's a mind to change the document, would, would simply be to change it and share it with the public again. That leaves absolutely no doubt or concern about whether you followed code appropriately and stayed within the guidelines of the changes that would be appropriate.
Right, it's, it's not so much that, that you have to go through line by line, but if there's going to be changes, then why not err on the side of caution and renotice the public here so that it can be, so that there's, there's no, then why chance it and get it overturned on procedural defect when you didn't have to? At all costs, it's cost of the advertisement, and that delay to when we could have it.
Okay, so if I understand you correctly, if we were also with this for a bit longer, make sure we get it right, given all the public interest and our need to read through all the comments and listen to all the comments and synthesize that we could at a later date, if I heard you correctly, advertise in another public hearing and not want to follow any time limit's placed, or that we might have otherwise placed upon ourselves vis a vis a planning commission recommendation to us now. Is that correct?
Correct. So unlike a special exception where you place a 120-day time limit, there is no such time limit for an amendment to your zoning ordinance.
Okay, great. And then my second question, and maybe I should be more on top of Reed, Reed V. Gilbert, on political signs, meaning, you know, DA for supervisor, or Whitson for supervisor, or Trump for president, or whatever, and I know that's a big league between us and the president, but what are the, the state side, Reed, or not state side, Reed, Reed V. Gilbert, but looking through that lens, what restrictions may we place on political signs in terms of time limit that they might be in place? And I know that our current sign ordinance does specify that political signs must not, or at least they must be taken down by a certain date. I'm not sure if it specifies what one they can be put off.
Title 15-2, the state code does speak to this, and I don't recall the section 900. 109, thank you. Basically says that you can regulate temporary political signs to this no more than you regulate other temporary signs. You just have to have them being the same, which is generally in keeping with what Reed V. Gilbert said anyway, so it's just, it's any other sign.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, my, my current thinking on hay bales or whatever medium somebody wants to use is it comes down to a time limit, a reasonable time limit. And I think our rural community, you know, we're not, I think we're, we all are headed in the same direction, which is we don't want to cover our landscape with signs. I know I took my political signs down, you know, within probably 36 hours of the conclusion of the election, and I think if temporary signs and political signs all fit into the same category where their time limits placed upon them, then maybe that's a way to remedy it. But most importantly, speaking of time limits, I just want to know, to waste time, we're under the gun as a board to make a decision, and it sounds like because this is not a permit, I wish some, some private party is relying on a decision. We may hunt down the road and reset the time clock for any decision. Is that right?
Correct.
Great, thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Carney?
Thank you. I would just like to thank all of the public for being so incredibly engaged on this topic and coming tonight and staying this long. I think it's 10 o'clock now, just to speak on this issue. I have no intention of making any decision other than to continue this discussion for quite a while. I'd like to thank the planning commission for going over, this is tough stuff. This is policy through the lens of a Supreme Court case that make things difficult. And, you know, Rappahannock is a beautiful place, and I think that keeping it that way is really important. So I've got a couple things that I think that we need to work on. And, you know, I think tonight's probably not the night to get into the nitty gritty. I, I was really just wanting to hear what the public had to say, but, but a few quick takeaways from me is that I, I hear that people just don't want huge signs. The art carve acts complicated, and maybe duration needs to be looked at in terms of temporary signs. And I think we can get there, but I think it is going to take some time because it is pretty complicated. But again, I just wanted to thank everybody for, for showing up and for being engaged. And, you know, I think it'll take these, these kinds of conversations to, to get there. So, thank you.
And I just want to basically thank everyone, first of all, for the adherence to the time limit, because I know you had pages of information that you'd worked on for days, and I really appreciate that you tried to keep it within the three to five minutes. I think you're going to think I'm crazy, but this is what local government is about. And I'm really proud that all you spent so much time and effort and the phone calls and emails and everything that we received, I mean, that's, you have the most impact in government, I think, at the local level, so thank you for that as well. I'm definitely not ready to, to vote on anything tonight. This has really been a marathon two plus years. The thing that keeps coming up is how do we get people engaged before it gets to this point? And although the board docs has information about the meetings and we post certain things in the newspaper and stuff like that, not tonight, but I would love to know how we can get you engaged before you get to this point of we could have voted tonight and you would have been very unhappy. So I think there are certain items that everybody is consistently concerned about, or I kept hearing about anyway, which is the temporary signs, especially the 200 consecutive days. Good grief, that's a long time. Why did it change? No billboards. We have had that forever. And keeping signs reasonable in size and consistency based on not necessarily the product that they're made of. I know the concern about art being pulled out into its own section has some people very concerned, hay bales, obviously. And then mine is the enforcement as well. I really, I know you love this county as much as we all do, but I can't imagine that you want to drive around all day looking at signs and checking the date on the back. So that kind of, that kind of thing concerns me because if we're going to make it a rule, we got to be able to enforce it, or then it becomes, you know, nobody pays any attention to it. So I'm glad that you're here. I'm glad we're going to continue the conversation, and I think that's all I have as well. I think we can move on.
What's the plan?
Right, so motion's always in order, so if there's not a motion to adopt an ordinance tonight, which I've not heard necessarily interest to, if not to, at least review the typographical items that were identified, this will appear on your next agenda and short of a work session or something, it'll carry on your agenda to continue working on. If there's direction for staff to look at certain things, we can take that now or any meeting in the future.
So I, I would suggest that we leave with a plan tonight, or we're never going to get anything done.
Correct.
So I would suggest that we empower staff to review and change in a redlined version the typographical errors that we've heard this evening, and that we, as board members, draft notes and come prepared to discuss changes we've heard at the next regularly scheduled evening session of the board supervisors after our normally scheduled public hearings and other business.
The September meeting.
That's correct.
I'll, I'll second that.
Is that a motion?
Absolutely.
Did you get all that, or do we need to go back?
That's why he records it.
I know. We've got a motion and a second discussion.
Yeah, I just want to thank Miss Smith for, you sent very, great comments, I think, on this evening on the sign ordinance. I appreciate her leadership on the planning commission. Thank you.
I just want everyone to know that planning commission worked really hard.
Very hard.
And a lot of the things that you brought up, we did consider, and probably in addition to when I ran for supervisor, did I ever think that we would need to build another courthouse? No. Did I ever think that people would be asking me to define art? Certainly not, and not something I want to do.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you so very much now.
I'll bet you I'm quick for a motion.
You, I think you have a general public comment.
Oh, that's right.
Let's take a brief moment. Let's take a brief recess.
The crowd is rushing out. Carney, just letting you know that almost everybody has left the building, but we're still here. So I'm going to open public comment period. If anyone wishing to speak, please come up and do that. Not seeing any hands in the courtroom. There is one person on Zoom. If you wish to speak during public comment, please raise your hand and we'll recognize All right, I will go ahead and close public comment.
I have a question about that the other night when I called in with Ron Van Ken, he showed me his iPhone.
It started with iPhone.
And so after I, I reached out to you on parallel to say, hey, are you on as an iPhone? I changed your name then to Ron Fraser, but it, it depends on what the device is called, so your phone must be called iPhone, I guess.
I don't know. I just called in. I thought it would have shown who I was.
There, I'm getting a, we can't hear, maybe.
All right, I'm sorry.
I pushed that out of the way when we got up. I, I just wondered how that works because I'm technologically challenged anyway, and I just called in. And then you, I think you texted me first to see if that was me.
I didn't want to allow you to, I didn't want iPhone to be able to unmute at will, so I wanted to see if you were iPhone.
Yeah, I was iPhone. I mean, I was using an iPhone, but I didn't realize.
Once I learned that, I changed your name to Ron Fraser and then allowed you to be a co-host.
Yes. All right, I do know that here in Van Ken hear us. I would entertain a motion.
I, I move that we adjourn.
Everybody?
Miss Smith, Mr. Whitson, I think. We, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, everyone. Good night.
I didn't vote, nay.
Good night.